Testing, testing.
Yeah.
There it goes. Okay. We're ready to call the regular council meeting order on Thursday, July the 18th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Those in attendance are Bill Chomsky, Heather Martin, Brenda Milligan. Those not present, Kobe Pruitt, Sue Powell. We're gonna start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Bill, would you lead us in prayer?
I'll pray. By God, we thank you again for this opportunity to come together at the city council of Sidney Danbury. We pray that you'll be with us as we go through this meeting. We pray that we'll be honest and open in all our dealings. What we're here to do is do the best for our citizens and our taxpayers. Just be with Sue as she travels. Keep her safe. Bring her home safely. I know Kobe will be here in a minute. Just keep him safe as he comes. Just thank you for all the blessings we received. And may I just call this a Jesus name. Amen.
Okay. Do we have any pledge coming?
Nobody signed it.
Okay. No one has signed it for a public comment. So let's skip down to number... Let's skip down to number five. Discussion and consideration of paying invoice received from Missouri County Drainage District Number Eight for interlocal agreement. Okay. In the interlocal agreement between the city and the Danbury Drainage District, we said, it was in that agreement that when the projects are finished, then they will submit the city a bill. That'd be way too much money to wait till the whole project is finished and then give the city a bill. So when we did our budget this last year, we budgeted in $10,000. So I spoke with Mr. Phillips and told him we need to see some type of invoice. And if you look there, that's what he's showing. The cost of the actual pipes for replacing those driveway covers, they've already purchased them. It was $4,534. And then the engineering is way more than that. But if you put that part and that together, that would be the $10,000 that we have budgeted this year.
So we're at least making a payment towards it?
We'd be making a payment toward it, correct. Because I told him, we just cannot, as a city, we just can't afford to wait till the whole quadrants, all four quadrants are found, and then get a bill for a hundred and something thousand because we need to keep...
Or even forty thousand.
Correct. But we need to keep up with it per quadrant, what our bill is.
Well, and then they get tax money, so they...
Mm-hmm.
We shouldn't have to pay all of it.
No. This is just because, like I said, they're maintaining all of our ditches and doing all the engineering fees. And Heather and I are gonna work on putting out paperwork to the citizens because after we went to this last meeting, we now understand how they're gonna do A, B, C, D, and get it going like that. And we're gonna put the years with it. And then he said he was gonna furnish us with the engineering fees, the cost and everything, so we can put out a whole information sheet for all of our citizens, so they can see where we're at and how much it's gonna cost and why it's taking so long.
Well, I'll make a motion so we can discuss. Make a motion, we pay invoice received from Missouri County Drainage District Eight for the interlocal agreement.
Okay. You have a motion by Heather so we can discuss.
I'll second.
All right. Seconded by Bill. Okay. Any other discussion?
I just think it's a good idea to go ahead and do it. Like you said, we don't wanna have a huge bill at the end, so anything we can put towards it, not a problem.
And this keeps us on what we budgeted for. And, you know, just comment if they expect we're gonna have to pay more next year, look at whenever we do our budget.
We're supposed to be getting... I talked to their attorney at the DD eight meeting, and they're supposed to be emailing us what it costs to do the engineering study for the first quadrant. Their engineer is on vacation in Alaska, so it'll probably be next week when we get that number. And when we get it, then we'll know better for the next budget and then figure out, I'm gonna look into maybe seeing if we can find some grants or something to try to get some extra money to hurry that part along. Because that's what really holds us up is the engineering studies, because you can't do the work yet. So if there's a way that we could get a grant to push along the engineering studies faster than one a year, and maybe get some grants along with that to help do the actual work, because you need the engineering study to get the grants. I mean, it's not a sure thing, but at least gives us something to try.
Yeah, they got the survey, everything.
And then we were lucky that the county came to this last meeting. So what you told me was correct. We're not gonna get any street improvements until this project is over with. So you're correct on that.
Because it's either our, you know, this or the drainage.
Correct. All the people in town that are putting in all these requests to have their ditches dug out, it's not gonna happen either. So on our information sheet...
That's why the pamphlet would be nice, so if someone comes in for a drainage ditch form, then we can hand them the pamphlet as well, so they can see, understand, like, you're filling out that form, and this is fine, but this is the timetable we're on. And again, if we can figure out how much it costs and figure out a way to get it done quicker, then we can get roads back to roads quicker as well.
Well, the good thing about it, when we do get this done, you know, it'll take, it'll be three more years from now, we'll have money built up where we can do several roads, you know, do a certain amount of roads every year. We'll have enough to do two years worth of roads.
Because they built it up. But I mean, that's just the way it is, you know. If we need to come back and put on the agenda again to rock, remember how we were gonna rock that one road over there, and then we decided to pave it? Now that we know we're not gonna be able to pave it for at least five years?
Not gonna do it.
If y'all want me to come back and put that on the agenda about rock again, we can come back and revisit it that way. And I don't mind doing that. But now that, because Bill told me that's what he suspected. So while they were here, we asked, and that's the answer we got. But that way, we can put everything in the information pamphlet, and then when someone comes up to City Hall to request a ditch to be dug out, they'll have a pamphlet to hand them, to give them the information.
Good.
So we have a motion and a second to pay the invoice provided by the Missouri County Drainage District Number Eight. All in favor? Okay? Any opposed? So motion here is. All right. Let's go down to number six. Discussion and consideration of RS technologies pertaining to hosting a data customization and support of the NY SQL Alira program. And we need that to keep our police department going. I thought Officer Pate was gonna be here tonight to present that. But the first time I saw the invoice, I'm getting old. My eyes thought it said $501, because I could approve up to $500 on them. But that's what it is for, it's for $500. And we need to get that bill paid by next few days, because it expires on eight one. So I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to discuss consideration of the...
Okay. Have a motion to discuss.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. It's the same program they've been using every year. You just can't run your department without it. It's mandatory.
It's mandatory by the state, equally.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, so we don't really have a choice.
We don't have a choice, and this is the program that they're going through.
Yeah.
That's their data reports they're doing. So we don't really have a choice, but that's what we've been using in the past, and that's the price that it's gonna be to get it paid.
Go for it.
Okay. Brenda, you got anything to add? Okay. We have a motion and a second. So all in favor? Okay? Any opposed? Nope. All right. Go to number seven. Discussion and consideration of approving the health insurance for employees. We polled last time, and it was decided on option one through the TML. So I need a motion to discuss.
I'll make the motion. We provide health insurance for all the employees that want it through TML, option number one, and we will, the employee will pay $100 per month, and we will pick up the difference.
Okay. So we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So let's go on to number eight. Discussion and consideration of general and utility budget amendment for fiscal year 2018-2019. Okay. If you turn to number eight, I'll show you, we need to work on that again, because if you go down to street drainage, down at the bottom, see the $6,750? That black one. They don't go back one.
I'm like, one, two, four.
Yeah. That's $6,750. That can't be in there anymore, because that's what we're giving to the utility department. So that'll be a zero. And then when you turn over to the second page, the engineer for the glow grant, that $24,000, that'll be a zero, because we're giving that to the utility department. And if you put the...
From the general fund?
From the general fund budget.
Yeah, I thought we budgeted.
Yeah. And if you put 'em together, that'll be $30,750. So what needs to happen over on the utility budget? It got increased $52,998. Because see, it was $22,000, and then it went up to, this number is $52,998. That's gotta be off, because we only approved giving them $30,750. And if you subtract the $52,998 minus the $22,000, that gives you $30,998. So that's off. So we need to wait till next meeting to approve it, to make it match up with what we get.
Put the numbers in right, please.
Right.
It'll still come out good, it's just...
Right. We've got it taken care of. It's just it's gotta show zero over here, it's gotta show where we moved it. And right now, the way it is, we can't show that we've moved it. So does everybody have, anybody have a problem with waiting on the general utility budget for 2018-2019?
No, we can press them.
Okay. We'll put that this August the first, when we have that budget workshop, we can put it in there then. We just can't pass it the way it is written here. Okay? Then the discussion and consideration of the utility budget for the fiscal year 2019-2020. That one worked out for me. Did anybody else?
It looked right to me.
It looks straight.
Okay. Sue calling, and the only thing that she said was, "Melinda, we didn't put in $5,000 for the, if we decide to update the..."
Right.
...mini excavator. But Moya called the company, and he said it's $1,500, correct?
Correct.
Well, we can take that out of capital outlay.
Correct.
I assume that would gotta be capital outlay.
So since there's no, like, a separate thing, or I think Moya's already put it in.
You had $5,000 in lease equipment.
Okay.
And I reduced it to only, to only add the $1,500.
Okay.
And then the rest went down in capital outlay.
Okay. So see right there, the lease equipment?
Right. Forty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And you added it into capital outlay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion. We approve the 2019-2020 budget for the utility fund.
Okay. I have a motion by Bill Chomsky.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Brenda Milligan. Any other discussion?
We can do this with three here. It's not like a tax rate. We don't have to have more.
No, we can do it.
This is just a utility budget.
I'm just checking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Because it can always be changed, but we don't think so. Our work in hard business. Okay? So all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. We have to have Larry for number ten, eleven. Okay. Let's go to number twelve. Discussion and consideration of forming a committee to investigate the cost design and establishment of a city website. We know we're gonna have to have one. It's gonna have to be created by January, isn't it January?
January twenty. I'll make a motion to reform a committee so we can discuss.
Okay. I have a motion to discuss.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Since I got to thinking about it, not only do we need just to get bids, but we need a committee that's gonna think about what the design's gonna look like, so they can bring it back to council and get it approved. We go see all the different sites and get them to give us cost. And then the establishment of it, who's gonna be the administrator? Because TML said it needs to be someone in City Hall that actually works for the city to be the overseer, so...
I'm interested in being on that committee.
Not me.
I'm interested.
I am not taking... But along those lines, I was reading the deal, the letter that Robinson sent out for the tax base and all that. It says on there that if you have a website, it has to be on there. So right now, we don't do it, since we don't have one. But that's one of the things we'll definitely have to have, is our proposed tax rates and all that.
Okay. Discussion is now, we've had a council member to volunteer, and I, after I found out about the committees, you had to have someone there that takes minutes and all that stuff, and I volunteered to do that, to be the person that always goes to the committee meeting to take the notes and put it all together. Do we want it to be just council members on the committee, or do we want council and community, or just how y'all wanna do it? It's gonna be y'all's decision.
Well, you know, I don't have a problem with having somebody from the community, but it's gonna be the final, the council will make the final decision.
Correct.
You know, they may have, I guarantee you, I don't have an idea of what to do. Somebody out in the community may have a lot better ideas than stuff like this, like Roy or somebody.
I don't have a problem either with community members being involved at all, as long as, you know, probably in our first meeting, we'll have to explain like the legal side of it in the process and what we can and actually can't do.
Well, how about having a sign-up sheet here at City Hall?
That's fine.
For community members that would like to be interested? Because there may be some people out there that have a whole lot of expertise that help us.
And I would limit the committee to four or five, very most. You get too many, it just bogs down and causes...
Okay. I said I, you said you would do it. We will give, Brenda, do you wanna be on it?
I said I, I don't mind.
All right. That makes us three.
Two.
And we'll give Kobe the opportunity, but, well...
And Sue.
We can't, no, no.
Well, you can't.
We have one, two.
Three's what you have.
We have one, two, right?
Two's thirty-four.
Four, Kobe's...
Two's the max. So we'll do the mayor...
Well, let me tell you.
And two, then we need two citizens.
I'll do it. I'll do it. If Kobe doesn't, Kobe doesn't wanna do it, or Sue doesn't wanna do it, I'll do it.
You know, Kobe and Sue are a little bit less close.
I think they need to be given the opportunity.
Okay. So then it'll be the mayor, Heather, then...
Three from the city.
We'll put...
Council.
Ask between those which one wants to do it. And then we'll put in a sign-up sheet in there with Moya, and we'll be two citizens.
Sounds good. I don't think we have to have a motion on that.
And then that'll be, that'll be five. Okay? So we go on down.
Well, I guess, do we make a motion?
I mean, I made a motion that we consider forming a committee, so I can't say that I'm forming a committee.
And you seconded it.
Yeah, and you seconded it.
But do we need, do we actually need a vote to determine what it is, or we can come back later when we find out how many are interested in that, and then make the motion to accept those five?
Yeah, create the committee.
We can do that on the, surely we got by August first.
August third, couple weeks.
Mm-hmm. And we'll put it back on the agenda for August first to, that'll be our official committee, because we have to select a person in charge, and we have to see who's gonna be the one taking the notes, correct, for the minutes, and we have to post our little agenda on the door and all that every time we meet. So by August the first, we'll be able to... And Rhonda, if you wanna volunteer to just, you can come up and sign with Moya. Okay?
And request our citizens, not people from out of town. They have to be living...
Residents.
Yes.
It's that, yeah, that's...
Okay. The purchase order system, do we wanna skip that now? Are y'all, Sue's not here, or do y'all wanna...
She should be back on the first.
Mm-hmm.
We'll move that to the first.
Move it, because that's, that's her lady.
Right. And I just hate to do it with, now her here. All right. Number fourteen. Y'all tell me when Larry gets here, so we can get on these other, because Mr. Phillips here can't do his without Larry. You can't do yours without Larry, so that's why I'm skipping over you. Okay. Number fourteen. Discussion and consideration of purchasing a fireproof and waterproof safe in the City Hall. Okay. I would like to purchase a safe for Moya and Cynthia and Norma to use, and move the present safe that we have that was donated by Wells Fargo years and years ago into the police department. So it would be great for storing their ammo or whatever, because it's not fireproof, and we need something that's fire and waterproof now. So...
And we're all these, the third, same, same safe, it's just different places?
Yeah, the exact same safe.
Because we, they don't need one that's extremely huge, but they don't need one that store weapons in, you know, with all the holders. They need something where you put the old ornaments and things that they need to keep up with.
I made a motion to discuss.
Okay. I have a motion to discuss.
I'll second.
Second.
All of them have free delivery for any of them?
Or it's included, like, for the one that's for office supplies, included in there. It's $75, but it's included.
I include it?
Yeah.
I have a question on this. Did you by chance, will you get ahold of the Academy or Bass Pro Shop or one of them, and tell them that we are a small city with small funds? Because a lot of times, they will donate over half.
Oh, I sure didn't. Bass, you're saying?
Bass Pro Shop.
Bass Pro Shop, Academy.
Cabela's.
Yeah, Cabela's. I don't know if Cabela's does it, but I know that...
It's worth a call.
They're worth a call.
Worth a call?
Even if it's a dollar.
Right. And we can put it back on here again, but like I said, the thing you have in there now will be perfect for the PD, because they have things in there that don't have to be water protected. But for our part, we do need things to be fire and waterproof protected. So we can put that back on there for the August first. Is that bound to be August? Okay. Okay. Number fifteen. Discussion and consideration of windstorm coverage.
The meeting, when I presented the windstorm, the lady from the, Agent Victor Schimeneer had represented that it was gonna be $24,000, and you guys voted on that. She told me that was taking the water towers from TML and putting them over to her agency. TML can keep them and carry the windstorm coverage just as we have it. So that's, that's what it is, is keeping it with TML. Because I went back and pinned her down as to can TML keep them, and she said yes. I confirmed with TML, will the rate be the same? And they said yes. So it's gonna be $16,000 instead of the $21,000. And it was just to let you know, so if you wanted to read that...
And we had a deadline that we had to pay it back, so, you know, I made an executive decision to pay the $16,000 instead of the $21,000. But if y'all don't like what I did, we'll have to pay the $21,000 and then request TML to pay it, give our money back, if that's what y'all wanna do.
We save $4,800, that's a little good with that.
I like that idea.
Because I was running out of time, and I told Moya, I'm not just gonna make an executive decision. And I asked Larry if I could do that. He said, since I wasn't changing companies and the assignment that we always had in the past, that I would just ask you, I was beginning to see that.
Can we do a call?
As soon as Larry gets here.
No.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay. So we just need, I guess, a motion to...
I'll make a motion. That we only pay the $16,929 as we have been, instead of the additional windstorm coverage that we previously covered on.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Okay? All in favor? Any opposed? Nope. Let's go back to number four. Okay. Discussion, we're gonna go to number four. Discussion and consideration of being very ISD Education Foundation's request for variance of peddler's permit and parking fee and rental fee on December the seventh, 2019, for hosting of a fun run. Ms. Pelter, you wanna present?
I'm here on behalf of Rebecca and the Danbury Education Foundation. My name is Asher Malonic, and the foundation has decided this year to put on a fun run on December the seventh. We will need the pavilion and the bathroom and the parking for the park. I believe in the email, Ms. Pelter has asked for the fees to be waived since the foundation is doing the fun run. Um, we don't know the exact route, route yet, and we will bring that to y'all when we do know the route, but it would be a family fun run for on December the seventh.
Will somebody make a motion so we can discuss?
I'll make a motion that we waive the peddler's permit fee, rental fee for the Danbury ISD Education Foundation fun run on December seventh, 2019.
Second.
Second. Okay. I asked Moya to check into it, because I'm not familiar. Sue always sets up that first, that one Saturday to have the decorations put into the park, and you can't have anyone in the park when they come to put the decorations up.
That'll be done, she'll be done November.
And so we get...
Because Christmas in the park, December the first, I think.
Yes.
So a week before that.
Okay. And then do you have a time? Do you have a time to begin?
They were thinking eight o'clock to do the fun run in the morning, eight o'clock-ish. We wanted to talk to y'all kind of before we, it's like card horse, which one do we do first? I've also got in touch with the Angleton Parks and Rec Department, and they are helping us with making it successful, and what things we really need to have, and what things would make it easier and better for everybody. So when we get more information, we can bring that to y'all, but we wanted to kind of...
So you're not gonna allow any parking in the fun run at all?
Celia asked for parking, and she, and she's the president of the foundation, she asked for parking the pavilion and bathroom.
I just wondered where all your runners are gonna park at.
I, I don't know.
Yeah. And that was the reason I was asking for the time, because we have the people across the evening, and they depend on that parking in the evenings.
And if we started at the school, like, park at schools, I, I don't, we don't know the route.
Much likely, if it's a fun run, y'all are gonna be through by noon.
Oh, I'm sure we'll...
She just said she's gonna begin and end at the park. That's why I was...
Okay.
You know, where y'all are gonna park and begin, since you're gonna begin and end.
I don't know. She just told me, come, it's gonna be...
A lot of those runners like to warm up, they can park at schools and walk over.
And it's gonna be a family fun run, so they're not, we're not having timers or anything like that, just everybody come out and...
So if we give y'all the trash bags when y'all are finished, and go through the park and pick up all those water bottles, and bring the trash up here to the dumpster behind City Hall?
We can do that.
Because that's the only thing that I could think of, would be water bottles that people put down.
Y'all aren't having lunch or anything, it's just for the run and...
That's my understanding. She talked about maybe contacting food trucks, but she hadn't gotten that far or all of that. So for, right now, it's water bottles, the pavilion, bathrooms.
Okay. So now then, that brings up, if you say you're contacting food trucks, then you're asking for us to waive all of the vendor permit fees for all the food trucks?
That I don't know. Let's just stick to what we have now, and then we can come back to y'all with...
Ms. Pelter was asking me to waive the $20 entrance fee, not the food trucks.
Okay. Well, it says waive the fee on the peddler permit.
Right, because they would, they're gonna be...
Oh, for her sales.
Right, right.
Okay. Just only for the education foundation.
For the runner's fees.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? And if y'all will come pick up the trash bags from Cynthia? Cynthia, aren't they giving like three, or...
We give one for every garbage bin.
Okay.
There's like five.
Mm-hmm. And it may be that you only have one you gotta replace.
Okay.
Usually it's just water bottles.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. I got a good one for you. We still not have this one here, correct? So let's go.
He's made the additions and changes to number eleven, that everybody requested.
I know that he's not here to explain, because that's why his name's on there.
We can do sixteen. I can do the chamber.
All right. Number sixteen. Discussion and consideration of continuing membership with Angleton Chamber of Commerce for 2019-2020. I didn't know if y'all wanted to keep being a member, you didn't wanna keep being a member, then... I didn't know if y'all wanted to keep being a member, you didn't want to keep being a member, that's. But y'all done it past, but we don't have anybody that goes to the meetings anymore.
I don't think the mayor ever did go. Yeah, the good thing, I'll make a motion if we continue membership with Angleton Chamber of Commerce so we can discuss it.
I'll second.
They have things, you know, like they, they'll print out free flyers for you, they've done things, do stuff like that that we, we've used some of it in the past. I know that Rotary was a member and different things. And we've used their advertising and stuff. You know, it's three hundred dollars a year and I think if we use it, we could get three hundred dollars worth of benefit out of it.
I tried to use it on the daycare and they made her pay a joint.
Really?
Because I wanted to use them as the City of Danbury welcoming in our new business and they wouldn't do it that way. Because I even said, could you run me their scissors and so we could do the red roofing cutting on our, you know, by themselves.
I looked into the Chamber of Commerce a little bit for the band. I know the Education Foundation are a member. It's really great if you have someone willing to go to all those networking events because you can, you know, build a lot of connections and find out the different things you do, but if you don't have anybody going.
Who's willing to start going to the meetings?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. Ginny Rodden used to go.
If she's going for the band, she can just.
I'm not going for the band yet. We're still discussing whether we're going to do that or not. And I don't know how that would work out, but.
Do you want to go to the meetings?
I've never been to one. I mean, I would hate for you to, I mean, I don't even know. Do we know, you guys know off the top of your head when they are? Is that something we have to decide on tonight?
I can go if I'm, if I'm available.
If I'm available, I'm willing to go. I just don't know what night or day they usually are. Is that something we have to have to decide tonight? Does the deadline come or?
Well, the due date was.
It's due the twenty-fourth of June, so. That's typical for cities though, is not going to be on time.
Because the membership for investment, burn the mortgage, two thousand nineteen, that's optional.
I don't think we need that.
That's burn their mortgage.
I think we ought to do the two fifty.
Well, I'm willing to do my best to go to meetings when the schedule allows and appeals, I'm willing to do the same and hopefully between the two of us, we could try to get our money's worth.
Moya to call over and see whenever the meeting's on. You know, I know when we have elections, they always ask for people that are running for the city to come over and make the videos so they can help out with that. But I, you know, so we got a motion, a second. Bill, you're making a motion for the two hundred and fifty.
Yes, ma'am, I don't see it. We need to pay for their burning of their investments.
Of their mortgage. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Okay, any opposed?
I just looked up their event. They've got an event calendar and you've got a lot of meetings, but for committees and stuff. I guess we'd get a list of all that and see what would apply to us.
I just remember when I was on council, years before, Ginny Rodden used to always go to these meetings because she'd come back and report to us.
Right.
Going down to number seventeen, discussion and consideration of the formation of a memorandum of understanding between Danbury Independent School District and/or its police department and the City of Danbury Police Department. You have one copy in there of the one from Alvin ISD and we're collecting some copies from other cities and we're looking for some other small cities that have the same type situation that we have where you only have part-time coverage, because we don't have full-time coverage. See, Alvin, City of Alvin has full-time coverage. The other ones we have, Sherry, are from what, West Colum- you got?
I haven't got West Columbias yet, but I have like Paralands, Alvin, and Mambo's, but they're all twenty-four hour departments. So we can't really base ours on theirs because we're not a twenty-four hour department. So Brookshead Village thought they had one, but I called today and they do not have one. So they, now that they know that we're getting one, they're like, hey, like we should have got one. So they're going to work on theirs too. So I'm going to get with just like West Columbia and different departments that do, but even they're full-time. So I'm looking for just departments that are only part-time like us and the same size.
If the council has no objection, Heather and I are going to work together because we thought we could call TEA and get a list of all the school districts in Texas that have a police department and then we can take those names and compare them to what city they're in.
Same cities.
And then try to find some cities that are same size as Danbury that don't have a full-time police department. And, is his name Chief Ross? Am I saying his name right? Chief Ross had brought one that he was, had already filled out and everything that he wanted the city to look at. But then when he gave the copy to our chief, she looked at it and there's a whole lot of things in there that he put in his memorandum of understanding that we couldn't do because we don't even have the equipment for that.
Right, so I already, we did some of it out and he revised it, so that's not even a revised copy.
Right, this is just the one from Alvin, but we're going to get other copies for people to look at.
So you just keep working on it?
Yeah. I told Chief Ross that maybe by September, you know, that'd give us two months. Maybe by September, we could have something in place, ready to pass for him. And he's also getting one from Rosoria County, correct?
It's already been approved by the Commissioners' Board. It went to Charles, it went to the sheriff who approved it and gave it to the Commissioners' Board. It's already signed.
So they've already voted on it?
Yes, and so they told him to come get a copy on Monday.
Okay, so maybe we can get a whole lot busier on our end and see if we can just. But it's hard to compare the big cities without comparing it to a little small cities. So we have Kobe Pruitt entering at seven oh six. Okay, so can you add, do you want to add anything else to that, Sherry? Because you're, you're working on the one he gave you to see.
Yeah, I mean, it is necessary for the City of Danbury to at some point to get that approved because until we do, like their police department cannot be completely formed by and approved by T pool. So it is necessary for us to get this done for them. And so I personally will be working diligently on it to get all those departments that are comparable to the Danbury Police Department situation so we can have comparable MOUs to rely.
And I will say, Mr. Anderson came in and said, let's get, working on this, Miss Strong, and we're going to work together and get it done. And that was like about eleven o'clock, eleven thirty when he came in and by three thirty he resigned, so.
He is ready.
So, you know, we'll just have to go as fast as we can to get it, but we're going to have to have her expertise to tell us what we can even do and can't do because he was, I think one thing I was like running last.
He wanted us to, he had in it that we're going to run all of his twenty-seven, twenty-nine, twenty-threes, which is license plate, criminal histories, driver's license and wanted. We don't even have that capability ourselves. So he just, he's assuming based off the other ones that he's gone by, because he's never been in a school himself. And so he's, it's a learning lesson for him as well. So once he learned that I've done all this and been in schools, I'm like, hey, we can't do this, we can't do that. So there was no reason to give stuff to our attorney and have him look through it and weed out when we have to look it through at first and see what we can and cannot do to begin with and then go off of that, so.
And I told Larry, I'd already said to him, I told him to just throw those away. That, that wasn't valid, because our chief had looked at it and went, no, 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 we can't even comply with most of the stuff that's in here. So that way it didn't cost us any money yet. And so once we get it ready, then we'll bring it before council and then we'll look at it and then send it in for him to look at. So that, it hasn't cost us anything yet. Okay, so that was number seventeen. We'll keep putting it on the agenda every time so we can do an update. That way the school knows where we're at on this process. I hope the school will bear with us because we've never done this before and neither have y'all.
Well, we have to get one with the constable too, and the one that was set up was only with the sheriff department. So we didn't want to, I don't know, got them done at the same time.
It didn't?
Okay, so we, that, that was the one we came up with where we need to get one with the constables also.
Right, it's not, it's not normal to get one through the constable department in Rosoria County. Other counties do use the constable department. That where, what we talked about was the fact that the constable department on their own does come in and assist Danbury ISD a lot, and so it just is not going to hurt to go ahead and have a MOU of the constable's department because they may be available when the sheriff's department's not and were not.
Correct.
And even when we all are, they still may come in and assist. So it was better to go ahead and just do one with them as well. And most likely, it's going to look pretty much like the one like the sheriff's department, so it should get passed pretty quick as well before the sheriff's board.
And we'll keep working on it as fast as we can. It's just, you know, he just assumed that we had all the stuff that we don't have, so. All right, so that's number seventeen. Am I missing Mr. Boy? He's still not here?
His last meeting was holding him up.
So we're going to, let's see, we can't do number one, can't do number two, can't do number three, can't do number four.
It's going around ten?
We could go, no, I was going to put that to the end, but we can go back. We've done this one, done that.
What could, could the DHEA, could they do their meeting?
Not without him.
He has to be here.
Well, I assume they want him here. I'm, Ms. Woods. You want him here to guide it, correct?
Well, not only that, he's got all the legal jargon for all of it.
We do the consent agenda.
Okay, we could go back to number one on the consent agenda. With Officer Payne, Officer Humbert on the hot seat here. On your June two thousand nineteen report, do you have that one with you?
I've turned it in.
Right.
I did not.
I was just, I was just asking.
Yeah.
And I'll look at, if you want to come up here, look what I'm asking about. I was just asking, we don't have, show any reserves that work for us the entire month. We have two.
Well, I personally don't know if they've ever worked and I know most of Nick's hours were as the chief. So I don't know how to relay that. So how, how do you do that?
Oh, no, that's what I've got to get with.
Yeah, because he was chief part of the time.
Because if you look back here on the, the June twentieth minutes, his first, is it twelve hours? That.
Twelve hours a month.
Is that what reserve was? His first twelve hours in your motion was supposed to be reserve hours. And then after that, we would start paying. So I, I didn't know if he, if he really worked them and we just didn't count that twelve, you know, for him.
I, I, my assumption was that he probably did his twelve or if he didn't, then, then he turned that in because he was already paid at the time when he was going to get his twelve and he was already the chief.
Because even though.
I'm going to look at the sign and chief.
I don't know how that works. I honestly, I just know that his motion said his first twelve hours were the reserve hours.
Right.
Does anybody know what, whenever, what special assignments means? What is this? Because we had twenty-five, you can explain that to me too.
Are y'all using the close for twelves as a, no, no, that's the bank backs. That's going, that's going to make the deposit in Angleton and stuff.
Okay, yeah.
Those are not your normal assignments. They're special assignments. Okay, so Freeman did thirteen hours in June. And Nick is not, Officer Ely is not showing anything.
Okay.
So.
I have a question.
Well, we was here.
I have a question. So I see the monthly activity report for Officer Humbert, but I don't see one anywhere in here for Officer Williams.
Right.
And I looked three times and I'm missing out somebody.
No, because when I looked at June of what Chief Dyson turned in in June, I mean in May, and I just saw that sheet with those four items, I turned in exactly what I saw. I don't know any difference because nobody's told me any difference.
Right, well, we're just, I didn't know, I thought maybe Officer Humbert did the voting and then he just signed.
No, the numbers were collected by Ely and then we put them into the form. But actually, Ely did the form himself and so after, after y'all, he collected y'all's numbers. Ely did the form, so I turned it in as is.
This is what, this is what, that report, and I was just wondering if maybe Steven did do it for the home department. Excuse me, we got, because of Payne, we got to hold the top down.
Guys.
No, as I said, was when I looked in the monthly report notebook that Chief Dyson, former Chief Dyson made, he has that top sheet with the three vehicle inventory reports with the animal control report and that's all he shows that he turns in, so that is all I turned in because I knew no difference.
Right. And we're not, we're not.
No, no, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying. Yeah, that's why I'm just saying. I'm not, I'm not saying it in any way. I'm just trying to like put it all together to say this is why, that's all you have, because that's all I saw.
Maybe Officer Humbert did it for the home department.
No, no, actually, actually, when I called Ely and said, hey, I was told that you did the June report. He said, I did. He told me where it was. It was that front page that y'all have. And Ely had already filled that out. I did the, the vehicle maintenance report on the three vehicles and then I, and then we did the animal control report.
Yeah, Ely didn't do that, I did that.
Oh, you told me he did.
No, I, I did those.
Okay.
Okay, can I ask you something, Steven?
Yes.
On this part?
And I'll put that one back in.
Well, the, the reason they're not on there this time is because nobody logged the idle hours at the first of the month, the first July, or the end of July. So here we are eighteen days in, so the idle hours aren't going to be accurate, so that's why they're not on there this time. We'll get on, end of July, August first, we'll get the, the new starting. And then at the end of August, we'll get them getting started back on there.
Same thing with the ending mileage?
Yeah, we'll get back on track next month.
There's no way to do it for July. No, that's my unit. I have no idea how much mileage it was because nobody was driving it.
So they did the start mileage, see right there, they did.
Yeah, I see the start.
I had a, I had a report to go off of from the last month. I have no idea how much it was when I came or who drove it before me, so I was not able to put an after an amount. And so due to that fact, I did not put any amount, yeah.
I was just wondering.
That's why, that's the, that's the unit I'm driving.
Even, this is not Officer Payne, Officer Ely did this report and I know this report said windshield.
No, he didn't.
It says Dyson, yeah, he did.
She's talking about on that document right there.
I don't know which document that is.
Monthly vehicle maintenance?
No, it was just, because it went from one last month having a crack. It went from having a crack in the windshield to this month not having a crack in the windshield, but I know we have a crack in the windshield.
Right, and I didn't realize that they were documenting that crack in the windshield because I did the reports and checked to see if there was first aid kits and et cetera in the vehicles. And so I didn't notate that, that yes, we know that has the crack on the shoulder. I have the appointment for next week to get the windshield replaced.
Right, my only, and this will be up to council, my only maybe suggestion on these, because I look, I want this charged to last. I do. You know, not repeat the history that we had in the past. I'm just wondering if we should have, what these reports are done, the liaison sign at the bottom. What do you got, Bill? What's these, not, not the police report, I'm talking about the car reports because we created this form ourselves and gave to the PD.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
But we had an issue with the oil not being changed, so this was our answer about our responsibility of helping to make sure that oil gets changed. And that's what I'm saying, my suggestion would be that the liaison, like when you do the report, then it goes to the liaison and the liaison. that it goes to the liaison and the liaison signs off on it and then gives it to.
Normally, in most police departments, the chief is the one that does, that hands off this report to their officers. Their officers report back to them with the vehicle maintenance report to show it's done. And then the chief turns in that information, um, and, and then it just is done.
So, I mean, that's fine with me too. I'm just trying to think about getting, you know, if, if somebody needed that, like till you get like your feet on the ground.
Well, I had to come in, I had to come in at the big middle of the month and give a report from the month before that wasn't done. So yes, it left me in a position that I couldn't give those numbers correctly to you. So I'm not gonna put something in there that's not correct. So I left them blank instead.
Cause.
But now I know, now I know what's expected of me as I go each day. My expectations are, you know, getting clearer and clearer, yes.
Cause that's the only thing I thought, cause each one is a sign.
But I mean, I don't, I don't have any problem with, um, if you wanna sign off on them and then, I mean, there's, if that's what y'all wanna do.
And I, and Steven, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I thought the chief said like the engine idle and stuff, you hit a button in the car and then it pops up or something like that.
Yeah, you can, on the two interceptor cars, yes, the Tahoe, no.
No, the Tahoe can never be, that park can never be filled out, yes, we know that. It's just we kept the same form for.
Right, and if nobody notated on the interceptors, so it's hard in the middle of the month to try to figure that out when it wasn't done from the beginning. But now that I know then we'll do it August the first and have that reading. And then we'll know at the end of August. So July's report next month will not be accurate. And also, that August report from then on, it should be accurate every single month. And you should be able to have your numbers.
So maybe it's the liaison signature down there, cause see it, I mean, it has the officer's name. So maybe we should just let the chief of police be the one to sign.
Yeah, it puts a responsibility back on the chief.
Is that fine with y'all, that you didn't add it? Sign the true line?
And like I say, at the end of this month, you can go and see the hours and whenever the last input you can give from that date to now, how many idle hours.
Yeah, and if you wanna correct your copies on that, um, front page on the report and show Freeman with thirteen hours, um, that report, like I said, was already completed before my arrival as chief. So I just went off those numbers.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, I know Freeman was here.
Yeah, it shows he, it shows he came in on two different days.
For not putting his thirteen hours, I was doing that in a hurry. I came in early to get it done, cause Ely was asking for it. So I came in early to get it done and I just didn't overlook that, the reserve one.
And see, uh, Officer Yaley turned in something to Norma on the time sheet. But I assume maybe he was saying that was his July hours, when it really, maybe it was his June hours, I don't know.
Yeah, and you gave me a copy of that and I'm not clear either. And he has not come in since I've been here. So once he does, I can sit down and get some clarification on that as well.
Cause you know what I'm saying, I just know him to be denied his credit. Like that really is what it is, but I didn't understand what it was.
Yeah, me neither, I looked at it and I, I'm not clear on what he's saying either, based on what he wrote.
I know in June, I believe in June, because I took off part of the first part of June, he did work. But he, Ely hasn't turned in a daily, any of the times he's worked in the last six months. He hasn't logged on that, which he knows he's supposed to log his hours on there. So I can't verify hours he has been here, hours he hasn't. Also my knowledge on the Tahoe, if, cause he drives the Tahoe when he's here. So if my knowledge says that I drove this many miles, but there's a gap, say three hundred mile, two hundred mile gap, that we're missing miles, it's because he drove it and he never did a daily.
Right.
When you're saying daily, you're talking about the DARs?
Yeah, the DARs. And he's been talked to about, I told him, I said, I've gotta have them, because we've gotta log everything that we do.
Right, and this is the first time this is coming to my attention. So we'll have this corrected before we come back next month.
I give, gotta give a compliment to Steven, cause I calculated his, I mean, for one month, he drove seven hundred sixty-three miles. So I mean, no one can't say he's not going around the city, because it shows there in his mileage. Cause we only had fifteen seventy-four for the whole PD. And, um, he did seven hundred sixty-three of those miles, and that only leaves eight hundred eleven, so.
Right, between, between. Between multiple people, right.
Mm-hmm, so I mean, he, he, he's out there patrolling.
Yeah, I think they know that's my expectations as well.
And then, um, Councilman Martin wanted to know about, um, court security and technology fees. Um, it's on the Cynthia's report, where you go down to the municipal court. The, the VS stands for security. And the TF stands for technology. So you can kinda see that this, for the month of June, we collected six dollars for security and only eight dollars for, uh, technology. So, um, you said you wanted it to start appearing somehow in the budget?
The budget designated.
And I, um, instead of putting it in the budget budget, I talked.
No, do it like we do the, the park and the, and you said those designated.
Would that be for the police department, since those funds are generated for warrants and stuff?
It depends, it's on the county's discretion, cause it's a designated.
Okay, cause I, I, I had heard from a judge that normally those funds are like the judges at their discretion to say like, hey, this is how we wanna use them for security.
So I talked to TML about it, and what they said is basically, because we had, you know, had been talking about doing different things around it. Because the courts here, there are certain ways that we can use it that'll benefit all of City Hall, because our court's considered in City Hall. So for instance, we could change outside locks or do, use it to pay for our videotaping system. Not necessarily, I don't think necessarily, I didn't cause it's not city security, but see our videotaping system, um, to some extent IDs making and things like that.
Okay.
But there, I mean, it's just.
And the technology fund, uh, we had to purchase, um, cause we only had like a thousand dollars after five years that's already collected. And I don't know how much was spent in the past, but just this year alone, we've already had to buy the, um, um, update Cynthia's computer.
Cause she's the clerk.
On the court clerk. Then we had to buy the antivirus protection, and that was like almost ninety dollars. Uh, then we had to put new wiring in, and we had to, that was when Councilman Phillips was on council. He had new wiring put in City Hall, and that had to pay for the wires that were dropped down. So it's, it's been used, we just don't collect that much.
Yeah, right.
Okay, and then, um, on the, uh, comp time and vacation time, I'll give it more on that later on that one. Cause I didn't, you didn't make a request yet, but I didn't know if you wanted to or not. On that.
Oh, one time.
Uh-huh.
No, I didn't.
Okay, so if you do wanna make a request, we click on the.
Thank you.
On the first. You're right, one time purchase.
Right.
I forgot to ask you on this agenda, but I circled it to me by myself. But I don't know if you're wanting to or not. Okay, and then the other thing, um, on the, the July eleventh minutes, on that first seven minutes. Okay, I know on that number two, we were gonna use the street drainage funds and the general fund, which would be thirty thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. And that was gonna be given to the utility department in the eighteen nineteen. But to my understanding, it's not gonna be expensed in nineteen twenty, it was gonna be expensed in eighteen nineteen.
Correct, it was the current.
So that, that line needs to be marked out, correct?
Correct.
See where I'm talking right here, on number two, right here, right there. See it where it says expensed in nineteen twenty? It's coming out of this year's budget. And then it'll be, it'll be done. It, it will be expensed out of next year, it's gonna be expensed out of this year's general budget over to utility budget. And that's the only thing that I saw need to change on July eleventh. Anybody have any else, have anything in there?
Yes.
Okay, then when we go to the July the first one, uh, this one, um, number one, I need to ask Brenda, because I, I probably wasn't paying good enough attention then. But it says amend the utility ordinance nineteen oh eight to specify the individuals can't leave several rural cities. Didn't you say that was already a state law?
That is state law.
So we don't need to amend the budget then to, I mean, we don't need to amend the ordinance to say that.
We can't supersede.
We can't supersede.
So that, that sentence can be removed. Because I was thinking that's already a state law, so we wouldn't put that in our. Okay, and then go down to number two. And on number two, right here, it says first person interested needs to petition, um, I had to, but I had to go back and clarify that for, um, Ms. Holcomb, cause she asked me about that same thing. And that needs to say that you can only petition if the property owned on both sides is by the same party. Cause you can only make a petition for an easement if the same party owns both sides of the easements, which is what Mr. Roberts does. You can't have one person own and another person own and then him ask. So that needs to be changed too. Can only petition if the property is owned on both sides by the same party. And then. Hang on, I'm trying to. Uh-huh, I was trying to figure out, uh, see right that next sentence right underneath it? Cause that's, that sentence we need to change. But see that next sentence right there, it says the city can abandon or sell the property by either appraised value or abandoning, unowned. So I don't know what, I didn't know what that means on number two.
Mr. Boyd said that you could sell it by, by either an appraised value or you could abandon it.
Yeah, on our own, on our own.
On our own.
On our own. Yeah, probably need our, our own city zone or whatever.
So that makes sense then when we put in the word our? Okay, and then, um, number eight, if you go down there, I'm trying to go back through my notes. The way this motion right here was made by Brenda Milligan and executed by Bill Tontse, that there would be no yard sales in the park. That can't be, because you, we allow yard sales in the park whenever we have the red, white, blue, the citywide garage sale.
There must be for that specific person.
I think, I think what we talked about that night was that there would be no yard sales in the park or in the parking lot without renting the park.
Correct.
I, I was only saying we were talking about the parking lot.
Yes.
Parking lot or park.
Right.
But they would have to rent the pavilion to have the.
Yes.
Okay.
You can't just come out there in the parking lot and have a yard sale.
Right, am I not thinking that right? Because I, um, cause I, after I read that, I was like, whoa, we already do that, but it's without renting. You can have it if you rent it.
You can rent it and have, you know, like, when they have the citywide garage sale, the city club rents the park and it sells space in there to people to have their stuff.
Right, and they allow people on the outside in the parking area, but they've rented the whole thing. So that's what I got out of that one. Okay, and. Did, uh, I didn't see any problem with June the twenty-seventh, did anybody else? Anybody have any corrections on that one, on June the twenty-seventh? Okay. And then I didn't see anything for, um, June twentieth, did anybody else see anything? That one was fine. Well, I take that back, let me go back, um. No, I think I was just trying to say, this is where, yeah, on number, um, on number fifteen was where, uh, that would fit Officer Yaley, where Bill made that move to continue working his twelve reserve hours and we would pay him after. So that's what we gotta get, just figure out about what that paper he turned in, that would be his, I'm thinking it would be his reserve hours. And then he would be paying for everything after that, okay? Okay, and then number nineteen, down there on the, on June twenty, number nineteen, where it says, uh, the mayor reported. And that says Mr. Phillips's name, but it's really the interlevel agreement that dictates that we pay. The interlevel agreement between the City of Danbury and the Drainage District number eight. It wouldn't be him himself that's dictating that we pay, it would be the interlevel agreement between Drainage District number eight and the City of Danbury.
He was probably just pointing that out.
Well, when they told me they were gonna give us a big bill at the end, I'm like, oh, no, 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 we can't, we can't work that way. Cause then you wouldn't know what kinda bill was coming to you, and then you'd go over the line. And then I didn't see anything for June thirteenth or June sixth, if anybody else says anything.
Since there hasn't been a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with all the noted exceptions and directions. And therefore I got law.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second it.
Second, okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we can go down here and, um, if y'all want to, cause we have to read all the way on, on number two. But we could go ahead and go down to number three, discussion in consideration of Jason Tellteer's request to make changes to the revocable license to just, to discharge the wastewater. We could start discussing that. And, um, I was wondering maybe if Mr. Poole will be the one who will lead us on that one, because, um, right, that's kinda what you wanted him to do, was sign an agreement. So do you have any thoughts on it after you looked at it?
Well, I was, I was reading it last night and I, I caught a little bit of the tail end of whenever you, you came in the last time. And I, I understand what, what you took it subject to about how the superintendent can just come in and, and stop everything. Of course, it's the council that decides whether his, um, permit is revoked or started again, you know. It's not the superintendent can just come in and just, he can just stop you from dumping water if he feels like it is an issue. Um, whenever I was reading the, the notes in there, now it's going back in and, and the way that, that part reads is that, uh, him and, and his commissary, you know, they would have their slits together. And they're supposed to be bringing it to the city. Did we talk about that as far as you would bring it to the city? That's the way that the agreement was reading, is that the city would get involved with like monitoring his.
Well, and we let, we could let Bill interject too, cause Bill's when they came up with the idea of the.
You know, have, have a cop, well, I remember, we, he would have, like a two part, somewhere two places. He would have one, Monty would bring, retain one, he wouldn't have to bring it to the city, it would be there if we needed to go check.
And that's what I thought way too, when I read it in that bill that Mr. Boyd had prepared.
Yeah, there was enough, you read disagreement, that's about ninety percent of stuff that we didn't even discuss.
Correct.
That's what annoyed me when I saw that.
Now, the one thing, the one thing that I understand, like when we were talking about when we got, um, the superintendent's input on it, I can understand him having the ability to tell you, stop. You know, something, something is amiss, something is wrong, something is, is going on here. And so I, I also understand why you object to that, you know, obviously you don't want to pay out money to get this permit started. And then all of a sudden, somebody could just come out of the blue and say, well, you're done already, you've only done this one time, but I don't like it, so you're done.
And he's the one that objected to it, uh, the very first.
Well, and he did, and then Sue went back through and, and had a discussion with him. And, you know, maybe they saw each other's points of view and, and Sue came and said, well, you know, and he's okay with it. I mean, we're looking at the amount of water, I, I understand that on yours, we're not looking at gallons and gallons. And you're gonna have, you know, a fifty-five gallon drum and it's gonna be, you know, dumping into the system. And like Bill was saying, you know, you're taking it from that commissary's water source and dumping it into that, you know, so I mean, it's one for the other. But was there some other parts in there that you had direct opposition to?
Seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-one, and the I...
I left mine...
No, it's in your book, it's in your book. So if somebody will make it, now that Koby's kind of presented it, if somebody make a motion to discuss. And seconded by Bill, we could all make a motion to discuss. And unless y'all wanna do it a different way, I thought we could just go one thing at a time and see, since Mr. Boyd is here, go one thing at a time very quickly and see what he's willing to help us take out. So if you go to the I.I. on the front page, page number one, you're wanting seven gallons there instead of five gallons, correct?
So that's the thing, what if I get another trailer and it's gonna be ten gallons? What happens then?
He asked for seven gallons.
I didn't ask for any number of gallons. I stated my tank was seven gallons.
No, in your, and I went back and read the minutes today, you said at the present time, there was nev- there was never any, uh, set number of gallons that you could dunk per week or whatever. You just said at the present time, you thought that it would probably be no more than ten gallons a week. Is, you know, when we were first discussing it, that's what she has in her, her minutes.
Right.
That, that's probably what you thought it was gonna be. But there was never any set thing that you can't do more than a certain day. That, that's why this was a shock to us too, like it is to you.
So what happens, like, if it becomes a torrential downfall, why is it covered by...
Well, yeah, let's go back to the I.I. work with...
No, I mean, what, what happens if it's raining and it goes, it's in my sinks and now my tank's filled with seven gallons?
You see what I'm saying?
I don't think the number of gallons is crucial. It, it has to have a limit. And we're talking about very, very small quantities here. And the whole point of putting a number in there was to ensure that it would be very small quantities. So what number did I use?
We used...
It's what Mr. Peltier suggested.
I never said five gallons, ever.
That's how I recall it. There's no point in arguing about it. But the, I don't think the, whether it's five or seven is not crucial. The point is to keep, to have a, a limit and it's a relatively small number, so I'm okay with the seven.
You wouldn't have a problem with increasing it to the seven?
No. So another point on this, is this specific to me or is this anyone else in the future? Like you were saying here in the future.
It's to you.
It's to you.
Yeah. Cause it's in here that...
Yeah, it's got your name on it.
Right. In the, in the minutes that the city secretary took, it says that anyone else that wants to apply for this is gonna be on an individual basis. There's not a blanket agreement for everybody. It's an individual.
We would have to sit down and get a license suitable for what their business is doing.
Correct. So you're in agreement then to change the, on page one, you're fine to put a seven there?
Yep.
Okay? So let's go now to, uh, number seven. And correct me, uh, Mr. Peltier, I'm thinking you're wanting us to take out the last two sentences where the licensee shall deliver the receipts to the city each week regardless of what is requested. And in addition licensee and commissary, uh, shall each deliver the receipts to the city upon request. It's the last two sentences that you're wanting removed. Am I correct?
Correct. The se- the, the last sentence, I don't think is even, he could, I mean...
So you don't want to deliver the receipts to the city at all?
Yeah, that's the part that I read in there was...
You understand what I'm getting at?
He's agreeing to keeping the little receipt book.
Right.
And it being, he has a copy and the steakhouse has a copy. It's, he, am I misunderstanding? You're just wanting the last two sentences removed where you don't bring that part into the city?
Sure, but...
But probably.
My signature can't bind Monty to an action.
It doesn't say anything about a signature. It doesn't say anything about backing anybody. We want a record of what gets dumped. And what good does it do to have a record if we can't have the record?
That's my point. Because if, if we're having a limit on how many gallons that we have to have access to the record.
Why would you care?
So the one, okay, so I understand what, what Mr. Boyd is saying, but I, I think what I'm getting back to, I think what Mr. Peltier is getting back to is, when we first started discussing this, Mayor, the very first thing you said was, the city has gotta be involved with this. Who is gonna be responsible? Okay? So the conversation that I understood it to be was that Mr. Peltier was gonna maintain a book and Monty was gonna maintain a book. And then, uh, how is it, uh, you would write a receipt out or he would write, Monty would write a receipt out to you and you would keep that like ledger? You know, you would keep that as you retaineded that information. And if the county or whoever does that kind of inspection was to come to your business, you could, you're proof of, hey, I've been doing this. And so...
In the same token, Monty would have a record of it.
Exactly.
Right there.
But when we bring the city back into it, now the city is, is also having to monitor this as well, which means now the health inspectors, you know, somebody from the city has gotta be available to discuss this if, you know, a, a health inspector has a question. And it's not that I would be against that, but I think from the very beginning, the conversation we had, we didn't want that. We didn't want the city to play a responsible role in that. We wanted them to take care of their...
Right. But if we're having a... Doing in our plan.
We need to know.
If we're having a contract with a limit that says seven, then we need a way to, not every day, but periodically if we feel needed to verify that it's seven. It's not that we wanna, you know, have him deliver it every time he dumps or anything like that. We just need to have the right to verify what's being dumped into our system and we're allowing it to be dumped into our system.
So then, why don't we write it that the superintendent would, would visit the...
Superintendent's not in it.
You gonna, you gonna pay the superintendent twenty, thirty dollars an hour to go and sit in the launch?
Yeah, I go, I go check, check Monty's records.
I'm not talking about the, the water. I'm talking, this is not talking about the water. This is talking about the logs. This is talking about the actual log books.
Mr. Boyd, I'm just curious, what I wrote down on this, and I just came to me. Since he would, he, the, the city's allowing this, would this fall under Public Information Act? So someone in the city could say, so see if some, if this falls under Public Information Act, then we have no choice but to have copies?
I would need to look. There is a provision that says that some utility customer information is confidential. And I would have to look and see whether this falls under that or not.
Okay.
Would you just redact the name?
Would you redact the name like you did on the I's?
It has to do with, um, going information and I, I don't know if it includes quantity of use. Um, but a lot of information about utility customers is confidential and his quantity of use might be. I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. It's easy to find out and it, it says what it says and we follow what it says. So it's, it's not a decision point for us one way or the other.
That, well, that's the only thing that popped in my head when the city doesn't have a record, that someone can put in that public information request, I gotta have a way to get the data. All right? Number eight.
Or are we gonna do a seven, leave it like it is?
I would recommend leaving seven like it is.
Or are we, or could we change it to monthly?
That's what I was about to say. Could we ask for a monthly?
Deliver the receipts to the city weekly, monthly? That way he's not having to come here every week. He can bring it once a month.
Well, what we discussed, Bill, in the front office, and I think Moia had a great suggestion, that he could just make a copy and, you know, the slot. He just put it in the night deposit slot so he doesn't have to come in. He just drops it down in there. Cause you wouldn't wanna give us the original or your carpet or, uh, the steakhouse. You just wanna make a copy of what you've received and then drop it down in the slot. Then it'd be their responsibility to file it and keep up with it, not yours.
Okay, so my question on the last sentence is what happens when Monty goes to turn it in?
No, he doesn't have to.
So that last, that last line needs to be taken out?
Yeah.
No, I said, they can have it on request. If we want it, they have, you have to provide it.
Doesn't it say on there that the commissary has to turn it in?
It's the licensee and commissary, so we can take out the commissary. We can put it all on Mr. Peltier.
That's what I'm saying. My signature shouldn't be able to bind anybody to do any action.
Well, then if they don't, it puts you at bridge.
Well, it shouldn't be a document.
He's saying he wants to take the whole responsibility.
Does Monty have his power of life for his signature on that?
Well, and it says in addition, licensee and commissary shall each deliver the receipts to the city upon request. That way, it's a way of checking if there's a discrepancy.
That's in addition to the line right before it says do it weekly, so obligated for weekly in addition to on request. So like, every Friday, but also maybe Tuesday or maybe Wednesday.
Well, we're gonna say...
He's gonna change it to monthly though.
But as it's written now, that doesn't mean on request completely. That means in addition to weekly.
Since he's, Larry, since he's giving it to us every, every month, uh, we can, in that second last sentence, we can delete licensee and just say in addition, commissary shall deliver the receipts to the city upon request. But, no, if we decide we want in the middle of the month to see...
Yes, we feel, yeah.
We could leave it, leave it like it is, but I don't see us gonna be, that we're gonna be requesting it a whole lot.
Right.
Yeah. Say in the middle of the month, something's going weird and say we wanna see what you've done. You're obligated once a month, you know, about to change that to a month.
Well, what about this? Um, make it weekly, make it copies, take out the last sentence. So it says licensee shall deliver a copy of the receipts to the city each week regardless of the request by the city, period in the paragraph. So it leaves the commissary out of delivery, well? I'm talking myself, I, we, we want the commissary to have receipts and want to... I think we oughta to leave it like it is. If, if you wanna change, make it say copies of the receipts monthly. And then that last sentence says we can request copies, you know, in between the, the monthly deliveries.
So next last sentence, licensee shall deliver, uh, copies of the receipts to the city each month and then leave the last sentence like it is.
Right. So licensee delivers copies of the receipts each month regardless of the request by the city and then no changes on the last sentence.
So Mr. Peltier, can you live with that? You know what I'm saying? I, I don't wanna waste your time or ours, because if you can't live with number seven, then there's no need to proceed.
So you've only changed the timeframe from weekly to monthly, which I'm not even worried about the timeframe. I'm worried about why is Monty, uh, put his signature on there and haven't signed it? And then he's obligated to...
Because he's the one that has the sewer system.
Right. But so my signature is tying somebody to doing something. To bringing receipts up here.
But that's, but that's his choice to allow you to do it, just like it's our choice. So he can say, you know, I'm not okay with you dumping because I don't agree to this and then... But by agreeing, it'll allow you to dump. My feeling would be that he's agreeing. Am I wrong?
I don't think that he would agree to that. You put what I'm making...
What, that he has to provide us a copy of the, the receipts every once in a while?
Right.
Why not?
Well, his signature isn't gonna be on the document. That's the thing. That's what I don't understand is how...
Well, he is keeping it, that's why they're...
He's got a log.
All right. Had a signature. The commissary to agree to comply with the provision of this agreement regarding the commissary.
Yeah. Somebody has something.
So in, in, when you were envisioning how, cause I mean, obviously this is all brand new for what we're doing as well. Um, the log books, how were the log books gonna be set up to show that there is, you know, joint action on both sides, your side and the commissary's side? How, how was that log gonna be kept? How, if somebody was to inspect, you know, before we got to this point, if somebody was gonna inspect your log, what would they see? What would they find? What was your vision of that?
I had no reason. That was brought up here, like...
No, your, your health department said you had to keep a, a discharge. Right, that's where we got this from. Cause your health department application said you had to keep a, a log.
Yeah, all, all the commissaries in the Houston area that we discussed about this and that lady that sent the mayor letter, said that everybody that goes and dumps at these commissaries, they, they exchange some kind of a, of a log saying such and such person was here dumping such and such amount of water or waste or just whatever. And the commissary acknowledges that the person was there and the person acknowledges they were at the common, blah, blah, so on. I mean, that was the whole thing that we, we got to this point, we had to have the log.
That was my point is, it was brought up here when I've been talking to the county health department for four or five months. That was never brought up.
It's in your application. That's what I'm looking for.
But that's what I'm saying.
That's also spelled out in paragraph seven. And I recommend that we, um, on paragraph seven, change it from the receipts to copies to be delivered to the city and monthly rather than weekly. And then keep the last sentence like it is, except changing to copies. And then add a signature from the commissary that says they agreed to comply with the obligations of the commissary. That, that's fair to both sides. And I think that for paragraph seven to bed, we can move on to the next one.
Do you have the letter from the...
That's what I'm reading about now.
The lady that sent it?
And that was another thing, that letter that she gave me to bring to you guys, I got that last, that day that I came here. That was the first day that I...
What we're talking about here is, you know, we had the official, we had the first official meeting where you came and we discussed it. And then after that, Robin, is that her name? No, it's not. Is that you? Jody reached out to the mayor in writing of everything that she expected of vendors that were doing what you were doing, so the, the, the city would know what she expects of y'all. And, you know, there's, there's conversation about what you have to provide, how you have to detail what it is that you're doing, you know, the waste or whatever, and so...
I'm just looking down the list of objections and I, I don't think we should pursue it anymore. I think there's too many differences. I think there's just too many objections. I don't think we're gonna come together. I don't think this is enforceable for the city to pursue. And I would recommend just dropping it.
Here's where, right here, thi- this page two, that was the, that was the pumping. Pumping receipts must be maintained. And that's what the, that's what he was asking you, what your vision was of the pumping receipts.
So you're right, we just don't do it at all.
There, there's just too many objections. There's too many problems. Um, Mr. Peltier objected to paying the fee that he agreed to pay.
Did you read why?
He objects, I haven't seen it.
Exactly, yeah, I read.
And he objects to, let's see, paragraph nine, did we have the right to test it? And ten, did we have the right to test it?
Because it was never discussed.
Um, on twelve, um, he doesn't want to endanger the vice. On fourteen, he doesn't want the superintendent to be able to suspend this if he suspects that something harmful is going into the plant. Now, it says here on fourteen that the superintendent of public works can immediately suspend this if he reasonably believes that there's a violation. Um, I would insist on that. I don't know why we would entertain removing that. Um, and then on fifteen, there's an objection to the force majeure clause. It says that if we can't treat the wastewater because of an act of God, we don't have to. Well, Mr. Peltier wants us to treat it anyway. Even if God is stopping us.
That's not my objection.
And then there's an objection to the paragraph that says it can't be decided.
Well, that's number twenty-nine.
It doesn't look to me like we're, we're coming together on this.
But there's a lot of things that were put into that were never discussed here, is my objection.
I have a motion. Did I hear someone say they have a motion?
It'd be different if we discussed it.
I'd like, I'd like to just enter a motion that we just take this off the table and cancel it. It's not at the best interest of the city.
Can I, can I...
Well, we'll discuss it, hang on.
Somebody else has a second, yeah?
So, I think at Mr. Larry Boyd's advice that we oughta just pull.
Right, I have a motion to have a second.
You're making a motion to only do the contract as is or to pull it all together?
She's making a motion to just...
She's taking a legal advice of the law or just to pull it?
Well, we could go with it with the, the changes that we've just agreed to, but...
He's not agreeing to the other...
I'm just saying there's no use to waste time. If he, if he can't agree to number seven, there's no need to go on.
So...
Number twenty-one also.
Right. So, but, but we're, we're going down the line. And if he's, if he's agreed to number seven, there's no reason to go on to all the rest of it because you're gonna be at the impasse on number seven.
So, uh, one of the parts that we discussed in the last meeting that we had where you're at, is we discussed with having Mr. Boyd prepare something, right?
No, we have a second.
And what you're saying is right, there are stuff in here that we did not discuss.
I have a motion.
Okay.
I'm waiting on a second.
I'll make a second so we can discuss, so Koby can speak.
Okay, now, you can speak. I'm sorry about that.
So, you're right, there are stuff in here, there is stuff that, that is in this form that we did not discuss. But at the same point in time, there's things that Mr. Boyd understands has to be in a legal document that we wouldn't necessarily know would have to be in that legal document. that we wouldn't necessarily know would have to be in that legal document, and that's the point that we're at right now. It's- it's not necessarily that we don't expect you to have a hard pushback like you are, but we need to do a lot more discussion, because like we said from the very beginning, you're the very first one to do this, and ninety percent of all the municipalities in this area are not supporting this. They're- they're not supporting this type of water dumping, you know? Yes, and like Bill brought up, you know, you're talking about, what, ten gallons a week, and it's coming out of one water source that's, you know, been in Danbury, and it's going to go back into another water source? And- and yes, you're right, it seems just that simple. But the fact of the matter is, is that it's not. It's not water that's going back into the sewer when you're done.
Okay, I- I have a motion and a second to discuss. So, Mr. Boyd, we need to go to a vote, correct?
If- if there's more discussion, fine, if not, then you can vote. And I'm saying either, you know, you can just drop it, or we agreed to make a change on the quantities per day, and we agreed to make a change on number seven. But if- if it's going to be just like pulling teeth every step of the way, then why- why do it?
Right.
We could go with it the way we've already ended it, or we could just let go, let it go.
And do- do I- do I- can I talk about it? No? Okay, so, as far as this document is concerned, we have to have the ability of our city employee to put a hard stop on you if he sees that there's something that's going wrong, because these are the- the employees that maintain our water treatment system. So, I understand, I understand, but I believe that that has to be in there, because somebody who is certified to do the water, if they see something that is not, you know, it's not right for our water system, he should be able to stop it, but he- he can't cancel the whole thing. It says in here that he can stop it, but then the whole matter goes before council, and council discusses it with you. It's not just a complete, you're revoked and you can't do anything ever again because the superintendent said so. The superintendent can just simply stop the motion of what you're doing, and say, "Wait a minute, I don't like this one bit, we need to have a talk about this." It's- it's not- it's not something that is normally happening. And- and I understand where you're coming from with your objections, but at the same point in time, you have to understand where we're coming from with our objections. You know, we're- we're not willing to pull out the part where the superintendent doesn't have any say-so whatsoever. We're- we're just not ready to put the rest of the city's water supply at that kind of risk.
Well, and then he objected twenty-one, which says this license may not be assigned and hold apart by license, or maybe license permitted to the person who's a V. Yeah, you know-
He has other workers that are going to be working, I understand you like the last time?
I guess you guys didn't see any of my actual objections.
No, all I got was he objects to, you know, so and so.
That's all I got, was all the objections on mine.
Because a lot of these aren't- aren't an objection to the actual-
Well, it says he object-
Item, it's an objection to, "I have never heard this before."
Okay, so- so, we're here now, we're here now, and we have Mr. Boyd here, and we have a council here, and let's discuss it, huh?
Let's-
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and put it to a- to a vote, unless anybody else wants to come back and discuss it. Otherwise, we got to move on and work on the DHEA stuff right now. We've got all these people here that need to do that.
Well, if we're going to move on, we need to talk to, I forgot what item it was. Oh, it's number eight.
We need to move on, these people thought we were going to start at seven, we were waiting on Mr. Boyd, they've been here, I know, but they've been here-
Did we just skip to the DHEA and then go back to this?
Yes, yes, we'll come back to this.
There's number eight about money that says that I'm-
You're going to give the city secretary your paperwork that we don't have copies of? That your objections that you had last time? We only had what we had at the center that night. That's all we had, you didn't leave that with us, so-
I left it with Kobe.
Didn't leave it with the mayor, that's the person that puts the mix and handles the mix together. Didn't-
The same thing.
Didn't leave it with me, so we're going to-
Oh, my- We're going to just get the DHEA and then we just talk.
Yes, we're going to postpone, and, uh, Mr. Pelter, give your paperwork to Ms. Getther, and she'll get that copy by the time, and we're going to go into item number one. And that's going to be considering adopt a resolution relating to approving financing by Danbury Higher Education Authority Incorporated for Education Revenue Bonds, Golden Rule School Incorporated Series 2019, and approve other matters relating thereto. Mr. Boyd?
First of all, my apologies to the board, I got stuff in the meeting that I finally just had to walk out of. I'm so sorry I told you all that. Where we are is, this is Jack Robertson, is our bond counselor. And Jack, can you go and tell them a little bit about the school and the project?
Sure, absolutely. This is for Golden Rule Schools, they're in Dallas. The Danbury Higher Ed has helped finance several deals for this charter school. They started out in two thousand and two with a little under three hundred students, and they now have four campuses and about fifteen hundred students. So they've been growing. This would be, if it's like ten, twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, this would be the fourth bond issue that they've done. And what they're actually doing right now, may end up having to do another one next year. But the- this first is- bond issue is they've got two campuses up in Dallas where the city is requiring them to build storm shelters by ordinance, and they need a little extra cash to be able to build those storm shelters, and at the same time, they can be able to add two classrooms to go along with that. Does anybody have any, I mean, if there's any questions I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
You may be putting some fairy tales good for me, or something.
Well, they're in Dallas.
Do they have any wastewater issues?
That's my knowledge, just they just need those storm shelters.
We have here the general certificate, the issuer, and it includes the resolution of the- So, this points out in paragraph one that the city was, well, actually, it was a form of a resolution, which is included in- The resolution is at the back of this, and it points out that Danbury wanted for the DHEA, and so provided by the State Department of Education, and that we have the authority to issue these bonds, and that you're approving the bond documents, which are about that thick, and bond counsel has written them, and a whole team of lawyers have been through them. I have been through them excruciatingly, checking, and if you would like to review those hundreds of pages, we have them here. But we- we recommend approval. And it's a forty thousand dollar issue, and it just, this certifies that we are approving the issue on recommendation of counsel.
What I'd like to just interrupt here just a little bit. I- I do think we are likely to split it into two. This one may be about twenty, and this- and the second one may be about twenty.
Okay.
But just, so right now, that's a little bit of a fluff, because actually, the school has an opportunity to fill- to fill a high school, but they need to get approval from TPA to add that, and they can only do that, I think, February, so we're going to split it up.
General certificate and all the documents up front will be executed, but what you're approving is- is the resolution at the back. And I don't want to stop anyone from reading that, take what you need.
So, man, after splitting it, does that mean we're not going to be doing this again next year? I mean, this- this will cover this year and next year?
Uh, no, so we will come back to you.
Okay, all right, all right. Is this basically the same resolution that we passed or some-
Very similar.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes.
They look remarkably similar.
Yeah. It's pretty much the same thing, and the big- big bond documents are pretty much the same thing, and I've read them anyway, so, to make sure that they are.
And we're completely covered, the attorney general looked over it.
I need to point out a few things. It says in all capital letters, none of the personnel of DHEA, not the directors or anyone else, and none of the personnel of Danbury, not the city council or anyone else, will have any kind of liability on the bonds, on the documents, on court, on negligence, just the individuals are not going to be liable. And it also says early and says often, Danbury's not going to pay these bonds, and there's not going to be one cent of tax money taxed to pay these bonds. And it also says that, okay, the DHEA will pay the bonds, but only out of money we receive from Golden Rule School. And if we don't get the money from Golden Rule School, we don't pass it on to the bondholders, and they don't get paid. So they can get paid from money that flows from Golden Rule Schools, and if they don't, then they can foreclose on the schoolhouse. And if that doesn't work, they're just out of luck. And it says it early, and it says it often, and in many of the documents. And that's the important bit. The other thing that allows us all to sleep at night at night is the way bond law is set up in Texas, and most of you have heard this, but it won't hurt to hear it again once a year. The attorney general grades our papers before the bonds are actually sold, to make sure that everything is valid and binding. And then the attorney general says, "These bonds are good." Okay? Now they are good. And if there was some problem, a glitch in the documents, or a step in the procedures that was missed, that's tough luck. The attorney general said they're good, so they're good. And the reason for that is so that bond buyers will have confidence in buy the bonds and not worry, "Oh, my gosh, are they going to pay these things? What if there's a loophole?" That's what it's for, but it also gives us the peace of mind of knowing that this is just a triangle, there's us, and then there's the bondholders, and then there's the school. The school pays the money to us, we put it into our other hand and pay it to the bondholders. But actually, it's simpler than that, because there's another bank involved. The trust estate administrator, is that it?
There's a trustee.
Yeah, there's a trustee-
They'll take care of it.
Who does that for us. And they collect from the school and turn it over to the bondholders, so we really are not involved.
Right. It's more that the- what the higher ed is doing is facilitating the ability of a- of a 501(c)(3) that's qualified as a nonprofit to issue bonds that are taxes that break, and you do that because you are a government entity. So, basically, in Texas, you get your fee for doing the issuance and go home. That's the way it works.
Is that what the kicker is?
Yeah.
That's what a kicker is?
That's how the city makes money. We're- we're selling bonds.
Well, they- they pay the city thirty thousand dollars to do this. And the question is, why are they being so nice to us? And the answer is that we can issue the bonds in wa- in ways that the charter school can't, and they need to borrow our ability to issue bonds, and have us do it for them.
So, we're going to issue a forty thousand dollar bond, and your city's going to make thirty thousand on it?
It's a forty million dollar bond. We issue that bond, they're- basically, they're paying us to use our legal ability to do that, so they don't have that ability.
Without- without pay.
And we get thirty thousand out of it.
And it's not just, I just- just for anybody, applications, it's not just charter schools that do this, any 501(c)(9) nonprofit.
They don't need them.
Methodist Hospital, and the medical center, you know, any nonprofit can do this for the- for the government. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that? And the city council will have, has a resolution there as well, authorizing the bonds. It requires a- it requires assistance from the council and the board of directors in order to happen.
So, do we need to read anything, Mr. Boyd?
We need to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
Do we need to read any of this?
No, that's not necessary.
Okay, so we just need a motion?
But I recommend that the council approve its resolution.
Can it prove the pardon?
The council would go first to authorize the board. Well, it's not crucial, let's have the council go first.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution authorizing Danbury Higher Education Authority Incorporated Education Revenue Bonds, Golden Rule School Incorporated Series 2019, a loan agreement, trust indenture bond, agreement at public hearing, official statement, and other documents concerning those bonds, authorized payment of attorney's fees, and connection there with and take action on other matters. So we have a motion and a second, so any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any votes, go? So, all- all in favor, Mr. Boyd?
Okay. Would the board like to read some more, or-
We're ready.
Are there any questions?
We're ready.
Kathy, I'm always-
We're ready, but, come on, Kathy, let's do it.
Well, is there a motion then, to approve the resolutions?
I would like a motion to approve this resolution.
I second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that unanimous. And then, the only other business, it's, as you know, it's odd, because we only meet very rarely, so we have the minutes pre-prepared, and we approve them at this meeting. And this meeting says that the meeting was held, we'll have to change it, that it was called at seven and started at seven forty on July eighteenth, and it was here, and that everyone was present, and that the resolution approving the bonds was moved by Keith Woods and seconded by Roy Lestrocko, and the motion carried unanimously. And then, is there a motion to approve these minutes that I've just read to you?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thanks.
I think they're to move.
Michelle. I'm Ken, my friend.
Yeah, I got Ken. Any discussion? Do you want to take a vote, Kathy?
All in favor, aye. Motion carried.
And is there a motion to adjourn? Before we do that, is there anything else that any of you have?
No, but do we need to sign that before we leave?
Yes, we will need Nora and Kathy to sign a stack of things, and Kathy's to get you started. Listen up, you're ready. All right, all in favor to adjourn? All right.
Larry, you may have another member.
I'm sorry?
And Miss Larry is now living like that, actually.
Remember giving this to you last meeting? Much for-
Once I came in and come up to him, I was like, "No, no."
Yeah, that's why I was going to drop the date, so he could know what you meant. It was just a public comment.
But nobody else got a copy of this?
No, I was just going to-
Okay, great.
Um, come on.
I got to go sign some forms.
She's the bomb.
How are you?
Mr. Boyd? Or you want me to go ahead and sign this one that Boyd handed us?
Um, I've got a stack of things for, for the two of you to sign, so at the meeting we can huddle up and sign.
I just didn't want to, you know, get the label thing for this later, so...
Um, she left the council part with me, and I'll get it signed and then send it to her.
I just want to be sure. So, uh, we're going to move now from, uh, general business, item number one, back to, uh, general business, item number three, discussion and consideration of Jason Peltier's request to make changes to the revocable license to discharge wastewater. And Mr. Boyd, I copied this while you were conducting that other meeting, so that you'll have a chance to read this over.
Thank you.
We stop discussing this?
Mm-hmm. We'll let Mr. Boyd read it. And I guess we can go ahead and ask Mr. Peltier, because there's no need to go to the rest of them if you're not in agreement of number seven. I understand, we'll, we'll move to the number eight one, I'm not going to skip that one. But if you're not willing to agree to number seven, there's no reason to go through to discuss all the other ones. Are you saying you're going to be fine with number seven?
As he restated it, yes.
Okay.
So, monthly, and there's a signature for the commissary. Is that, that's the only changes?
Monthly, and then, yeah, as written, just changing each week to monthly, and to receipt to copies, is what I have been done, who said. And then we could still ask for, you know, at any time on request, but that you would be turning them in monthly, is my understanding of what we discussed.
Yeah, the only, the only change would be that, that word from weekly to monthly.
And receipt to copies.
To receipt to copies.
Copy to receipt.
Right, you wouldn't have to bring them in.
And then there'd be a signature added for the commissary where they agreed to comply with their part.
Correct.
Okay, so you're fine with that?
So that also, is that every week? What if I'm off for a month in a different state? What happens then? Do I keep those receipts? Do I have to?
Well, Mr. Boyd is off in a different state, he won't be dumping here anyway.
But that's what I mean, anything.
We're just concerned of what's dumped here.
Right, but does this bind me to turn it in every month, even if it says zero?
If, if there are any, yes. If you're gone and there's no dumping occurring, then there's none to turn in. If you're here and dumping, then there should have to be receipts and they have to be turned in.
Right, well, like, uh, they can be mailed.
Sure can, mail runs every day.
So, so in other words, to simplify it, if you do this from May through June, May through July, May through August, you, you're doing it here in Danbury city limits, or even outside of city limits, and you're dumping over there at Monty's thing, then every month we would expect to see your receipts. Now, if you decide to take your trailer and you go to Missouri City, or you go to the fountains over on Fifty Nine South, obviously, you're not going to have your tickets for the city of Danbury.
That's right.
We need to be, we need to be understanding that when you're dumping at the, at the steakhouse, and you and Monty are handing off of the logbook, or, you know, whatever it is that you're dumping, up to your, what do we decide, ten gallons, we decide ten gallons a, a week? So, as you are dumping whatever with Monty, then when you provide an entry in that logbook, the month that that entry in, any of those entries that happen in that month, we need a copy of that monthly.
Right.
Number of logs.
But, uh, I understand going out of state, there won't be any, but when you're sitting in Houston, or you're planning on coming back here and dumping, or you're going to dump in the commissary's in Houston?
Yeah, it just depends on where...
We just need receipts for what you're dumping.
Just when you're dumping.
And on number fourteen, are, are you, are you not going to agree that the superintendent of public works can stop you for violation?
So, a lot of these, I think, were a misunderstanding, there's a lot of things that I didn't outright not agree to, it's just that these were never discussed with me, and I would, uh, prefer that they would be discussed.
Because the document didn't exist, and we didn't...
Right.
Go through everything in the document, we hit the key terms, and then I drafted it up, and you're objecting. And so, one of the things you've objected to is that the superintendent can shut you down for a violation. Are, are you going to agree to that?
Did it say violation in there, or just?
Yes.
Orally or written?
It says orally or in writing, he can shut you down for violation.
Yeah, it's, it's number fourteen, it says, "In his sole discretion that the licensee has violated any term or condition of the license."
Right. And then, then we get a report on it, and we decide.
And then the council has to decide on it. The superintendent brings the information in, this is why I revoked his dumping privileges, he provides his information, we decide on whether or not you're able to go forward. In other words, just like you have an opportunity to speak here, you would have an opportunity to speak then, as the lawyer of the superintendent stepped in.
See, that's not how I interpreted it, I thought it just says, as soon as he says, even orally.
So in other words...
And it's done.
The way that we all understand is not over, but if he...
It's a suspension.
If, if he reasonably believes that there's a violation, then he can say, "Stop," and you have to stop. Now, that's not the end of it, the, the council can consider whether to terminate the, the permit, but, and when he says, "Stop," you do have to stop.
Sure, but that was my, that's why I wanted to discuss it, because the way that I understood it was, it was done and papered it up.
No, it describes itself. No, he, he says, "You stop the action."
Got you.
"We discuss the reason."
Okay, and then number twenty-one, Mr. Boyd, if you want to skip over there just a second, it says, "The license may not be assigned." If I'm understanding, you, Mr. Peltier, you're saying that you're going to have workers that might be needing to do the dumping?
Sure, that's, that's not an assignment, but...
Okay.
I mean, if, if your employees act under your license, that's not an assignment.
Okay, that's, but again, that's just me not understanding what it is, it's not an objection to it.
Okay, and then, uh, number fifteen is just, "Only if there's a hurricane and no one can put anything down the system, you can't expect us to allow you to, because nobody could either."
Nobody?
I guess, if, if it says a wastewater plant goes down, that's my interpretation, but I don't interpret it that way.
Well, the citizens of the town can.
Well, the, the, uh...
But nothing commercial.
So the wording says, "As soon as there's a, a hurricane warning." Or, and that's an official thing, or it says, uh, I don't have it in front of me, or it says, "A heavy rain as deemed by the council," or deemed by somebody.
So, you know, the, you know, the floodings that we had, uh, around Harvey and the months before that, in, in April.
A year before that.
So, in the situation that you have there, you have the potential for contaminating the water. So, it's at that point in time that if something like that arises, no dumping until, you know, gang is back on, you know, everything's been...
It's not every heavy rain, it's at the city's discretion.
That's what I'm assuming, that's another thing.
If we feel it's a major event, not, you know, a couple weeks ago, we had a really heavy rain, but everything cleared out too, and everything was fine, it's, does the council have some sort of emergency meeting or decided that there's some sort of event? It's not just, well, it was a really rainy day that day, so you can't dump.
See, that's where I'm kind of, it's, it's not spilt out.
Well, and, and you know, this is, this is all points, this is all points that we have to discuss.
But that's why I'm here asking questions, Brenda. That's why I'm here asking questions.
I understand that.
It seems like you're, you're getting upset that I'm asking questions.
No, I'm getting upset.
It's pretty clear in here, the way I read it, you know, it's...
Well, yeah, but I'm, that's why I'm here, to make sure that everything is laid out.
It's, it's, I mean, it's very clear, it's to the point.
Okay, so where are we at?
Okay, so if you're in agreement with all the rest of them, are you, are you in agreement with number nine, "On request by the city public work superintendent, the licensee shall at any license expense sample of wastewater transported by licensee and furnished to the city public work superintendent, a report issued by firm license by the Texas Water Development Board to test wastewater showing the quantities of each of the following." Are you in agreement with number nine?
So that's what I was wondering, this is something that wasn't discussed until right now, how much does that even cost?
Um, I, that was a question of mine, I asked, no cheaper than two hundred and fifty dollars.
So more than I'm paying for the extra piece of paper, and on number ten, it's doubled up. So these are the things I wanted to discuss, it's not that objective I'm even discussing, two hundred and fifty dollars just for one testing, and then number ten talks about sample on actual trailer itself also.
It is hard to square the cost of the testing with the amount the, of business he's doing and the amount of the dumping. And I debated whether to keep that in here or not, but I decided to, since it's a tough call, to err on the side, or, or go to the side of protecting our plant. I would hope, and don't take this as a promise, because it's not, I would hope that we're not going to be exercising that right, because it's, the economics just don't add up for Mr. Peltier.
Correct.
But I think we should have that right.
Yes, if it, if it makes you feel any better, Mr. Peltier, we're very busy, our utility workers are very busy, and so unless there is like some sort of major issue that comes up, they're not going to be looking to find excuses to test your water and cost you money. At the same time, like the attorney's saying, we have to have a way to protect the city. I think a lot of your concerns, you know, come from a spot of like, well, that's really expensive, well, that's a pain, well, we're not going to be turning around every time and asking for extra receipts more than once a month unless we think there's an issue. We're not going to be asking for testing unless someone in our utility department raises an issue. In general, there's a lot of things going on all the time, but these are the things that we have to do because we have to protect the cities. I don't know if that helps you or not.
Sure, and on the same thing, that's, I would rather understand everything on the sign in my...
I totally agree, you totally should.
Especially that, because I'm paying for it also.
Correct.
Which is number eight.
You understand, we would never have this developed if you hadn't requested it, so it was your agreement that night that you would pay half. Now, it could be, you know, you probably have a different opinion from me, but to me, just to get it developed, Mr. Boyd said he would do it for three hundred dollars, and you agreed to pay half, and we would put, he, he said that, so if you hadn't agreed to pay half of it, we'd have probably said, "No, we're not going to do it, we're not going to come up with this kind of document, because three hundred dollars is a lot of money."
Fit taxpayers' money.
And, what did it say on number eight? When it signed, when the document is signed?
Normally, these things are payable with the application, and it's an application fee.
Right.
But in this point, we, we, there wasn't any application, and we pretty much already crossed that point, so, but, you know, pay it now, when it's signed. Um, and if you don't want to put up your hundred and fifty dollars?
He already has.
Okay.
You know, to my point was, and that's why I told the city secretary, call him and ask, because he's agreed to pay half of it, and my point was, if he wasn't, if he's going to wait and look at the document and then decide to pay, then we're burning the whole three hundred.
It appears to me that this has been a very contentious negotiation over something that provides zero benefit to my client.
Correct.
And, why would we want to do this? To, to help out a citizen, um, and if it's no skin off our nose, then why not? But it doesn't do us any good, it's just helping out a citizen, but do we want to get into a business relationship that starts out this rocky?
No.
If, if you're fighting on the way to the wedding, do you go through with it?
No. But Mr., but what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Peltier, you are not a resident of Danbury?
By about a hundred yards.
I have a question.
What if I have a trailer, am I going to have to go through this same process?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to have to pay a hundred and fifty?
Yes, you are.
It's an individual contract, it's not a...
Okay, so, 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 if you have a trailer where you are needing to dump water into the city sewer, then you have to go through the same process, not just a trailer, but the whole, the whole shooting measure is bowled around the fact that he's wanting to dump.
Oh, I understand, I've been, I've been in a proper conversation. I'm just asking, am I going to have to go through this whole thing?
Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Boyd, be, you know...
Yes, because this is specific to him.
Okay, so would he have to, would y'all have to pay him to, Mr. Boyd, to draft up another?
Yes.
Yes.
Because this is specific to him.
It would not be drafted from scratch.
Right.
But one thing would be a very low fee for this type of permit. Most places would charge far more than that for this type of permit.
Well, I thought we got by lucky, which is you saying just three hundred dollars.
I just have a, a statement, I, I think that what Mr. Boyd has just said, that this is contentious, it's only conditioned contentious because it's new. And he should want to understand, if I had to go through the same thing, I wouldn't want to be treated like this was contentious. I'm just saying. I mean, he's paving the way, we might have to deal with this in the future, so, you know, uh...
He's paving the way, not only for the city of Danbury, but the health department said, no other city does this.
Okay, and that's a choice y'all have to make.
Right. And when Mr. Boyd says that it's contentious, I don't think he means in an emotional way, I think that's a legal term, meaning that we're having not be able to come to an agreement.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's emotional either, I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying that it's just taking, what'd you say?
I'm just saying it's a little bit loud up there, I couldn't hear you.
It's a little quiet up there.
Thank you.
I just wondered if I would have to go through the same thing, when I have to get a commissary, like steakhouse, or could I form my own commissary?
And I don't know, I don't know if you remember, if you were here, because I, at the meetings where Mr. Boyd explained that, that there's no, and the mayor looked into it as well, there's no other cities that do this.
Oh, I was...
And so, I think this is, all these issues that are arising are coming back to the, probably all the reasons that nobody else does.
You're trying to accommodate.
And protect the city at the same time.
Yes, ma'am. But at the end of the day, we're all here as stewards of the city, and we have to put that first.
Exactly.
So, we've got everything worked out now, correct, sir? So, all you've got to do is just say, you're going to sign if they agree to this?
I still need to look at the new document.
Okay.
Because that's...
Yeah, let's just, uh...
Well, I could, I could tell you the exact wording changes right now, and there's precious level on paragraph seven, you got that handled?
Mm-hmm.
Um, where it says, "Licency shall receive the original signed receipt, and the commissary shall maintain a carbon copy." "Licency shall deliver the receipts," we're going to change that to say, "Licency shall deliver a copy of the receipts to the city each week," we're going to change that to "each month, regardless whether requested by the city." And then the last sentence in that paragraph, let, let me do that again, so you got it in front of you, page two, paragraph seven, third line up to the bottom. It says, "Licency shall deliver," insert a copy aisle. Now, continuing on, "The receipts to the city each stretch out week and insert month, regardless whether requested by the city." "In addition, licensee and commissary shall each deliver copies of receipts to the city upon request." So that's the changes in item seven, and then down at the...
Uh, there are, it would be a significant change to the commissary, correct?
Yeah, we're getting there.
Okay.
And then down at the bottom, it would have a signature for the commissary that says, "I agree to the obligations of the commissary and flowable in agreement." Let me write that on here.
Yeah, let's just, uh.
Well, I can, I can tell you the exact wording changes right now in this precious letter. On paragraph seven, you got that in?
Mm-hmm.
Um, where it says licensee shall receive the original signed receipt and the commissary shall maintain a carbon copy. Licensee shall deliver the receipts. We're going to change that to say licensee shall deliver a copy of the receipts to the city each week. We're going to change that to each month, regardless whether requested by the city. And then the last sentence in that paragraph, let me do that again so you got it in front of you. Page two, paragraph seven, third line up to the bottom. It says licensee shall deliver, insert a copy aisle. Now continuing on, the receipts to the city each stretch out week and insert month, regardless whether requested by the city. In addition, licensee and commissary shall each deliver copies of receipts to the city upon request. So that's the changes in item seven. And then down at the.
Larry, it would be a good thing if you added to the commissary, correct?
Yeah, we're getting this.
Okay.
And then down at the bottom, it would have a signature for the commissary that says, I agree to the obligations of the commissary in foregoing the agreement. Let me write that on here. And then it would have a signature for the commissary with the date. Or not in the foregoing agreement, in the foregoing license. And then on page one, the gallons would be changed from, well, actually, you've got, you said a seven gallon tank on the trailer. Okay, so seven gallons a day. Actually, I'd been planning to make it eight, just so there's no question about it. So are we agreed with those changes?
Close to.
I think that's the only change the city was agreeable to.
Yes.
So you said number twenty-one, it still allowed anybody, said the second part after the semicolon, nor may licensee or may any other person who uses vehicles, tanks, or other containers discharge any wastewater into the system. So that still says to me that I have to do it.
His employees would be part of the licensee, wouldn't they, Larry?
Well, we just had at the end of it, this paragraph does not prohibit dumping by employees of licensee from licensee's trailer. Because on page one, it's limited to one trailer. And they have to still be his employees and it still has to be his trailer.
So when he purchases other trailers, he'll have to come back and get another agreement.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'll have to come back and get another permit. So it's just, this is, uncovers one trailer.
That's another thing. Do you need the VIN number for the trailer?
We're not insuring it.
I mean, you, you only got wood.
I'll have two soon.
I'd say put a spot on there.
You understand? If he's. I could swap it out and.
He's keeping it specific to the trailer, then we need to have something to identify the trailer.
All right. So the VIN number would be added on page one to paragraph four, added with license.
And then that should be, that should be all of it. Okay. So basically, I just need a motion from council to approve the changes that Mr. Boyd is going to make. We'll have it ready in the front once he gives us those changes. And Mr. Peltier will either come sign it or not sign it. It'll be up to him.
I'll make a motion that we change the revocable license to discharge wastewater for Mr. Peltier with the changes that Larry has specified. Item four, seven, and twenty-one.
And then add on for the commissary.
And add on for the commissary.
Can I have a motion?
I'll second it.
Have a second? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? And Mr. Boyd, you'll probably be able to give us a clean copy of it, uh, not tomorrow. I don't want to be responsible by tomorrow, but by Monday or Tuesday? And then, uh, Mr. Peltier?
Are you in agreement with the, um, the license with those changes?
Well, that's the same, same thing. I was in agreement before. And then I got this document and I wasn't in agreement with it at all.
Okay.
Okay, well, we're, we're, we're looking at your changes. And we said what we're willing to change and what we're not.
We already voted, so what's going to happen?
Take it or leave it.
I'm going to have it ready.
I'm ready.
I will sign.
I think we should know now before we go to the additional time and trouble to change it. So, Mr. Peltier, you've obviously read it in some detail because you've made written objections at great length. And we have read the changes verbatim. And now that we've done that, are you agreeable to that? And is it, you're intent to sign that or, or not?
Like I said, I'm not going to sign it until I read the whole thing. That's just it. There's, you can't say, you can't hand me, not hand me a piece of paper and say, sign this. I'm not going to sign it until I actually see it, read it.
So Bill will have to change his motion then to just not, if he, if he doesn't want to do it, then it just needs to make a motion.
We just drop it.
It's just another bill for the mayor, we're going to be right here and start it.
You've been told what the changes will be.
Right.
Verbatim, not just described.
And if you don't agree to that, forget it. You know, we're trying, we're trying. You're trying our patience. At least mine.
So does someone want to do, you want to make a move?
I'm not making another motion. I'm done.
To, no, Mr. Boyd's asking so that we don't out, we're not out any more money.
I'll make a motion that if Mr. Peltier doesn't agree to sign what we've said tonight, verbatim on the changes, that Mr. Boyd does not have to make the changes and cost us extra money.
Okay, in second, second by heaven. Okay, all in favor? Okay, any opposed? So, Mr. Peltier, you can let the city secretary know if you want Mr. Boyd to proceed and we.
Why don't we just do that now? I mean, we're all here.
Get them with it.
Yes or no?
I'm still kind of thinking about the, all the different things that.
The answer's no.
That's a no.
No.
That's a no.
No permit.
Because it's dragging out too long. All right, let's go on to, um, number two, discussion and consideration of abandonment or purchase of city easement located on Avenue K and Sixth Street by Randy Roberts. And Mr. Roberts, you, um, submitted the petition and the drawings that you sent to me. I, uh, had them put in here also. I'll show you what.
That's, that's, that's the same stuff.
Okay. Just a color version. Okay. Okay. Um, so I need a motion to discuss.
I give you a motion to discuss.
Okay.
Correct.
Second. So we have a motion to discuss the petition to abandon and close street right of way of a portion of Avenue K. Mr. Boyd, I know you put abandoned, but Ms. Powell also wanted it to be maybe a sale to him. So is this just abandonment or?
Well, yeah, it would. Step one is that he petitions for us to abandon it. And when we abandon it, we would simultaneously, there are different ways you can do it. You can either just say, okay, we abandon it and whatever property rights you have or don't have, that's up to you. Or we could do a deed of that strip to Mr. Roberts. And we could charge fair market value or just a negotiated value for that. So it could go any number of ways, but I would say don't abandon it, except as part of the whole deal, including deed of.
Because I, I kind of think the same thing. Like, I understand that we technically legally could abandon it, but I would have said, I think a couple of times now, I'd like to know what the market value, what the appraisal is for it.
And just to be clear, you should not abandon it until we have a written deal signed all at one time to what's going to happen to it, what are we going to get paid? All of that should be part and parcel of the same motion.
Correct.
And all we have right now is a petition, I guess it's signed, or will be.
It is.
So then the next question, that, that's the ante to get this in, in play. But I know it's been talked about a long time, we're trying to wrap it up. So the question is to see, uh, a plan of how it would be developed without this street and how the city would be without this street. And ask yourselves, please, how is access going to work and how are utilities going to work? And if we need other easements for access or utilities, then the property owner can donate those as part of the deal. It's not unusual to have a real estate development that goes under a planned unit development. A custom plan for that tract because it fits that tract and works for that, that spot and for that community. That's, that's not an odd request. And if there's an unnecessary street in the way messing things up, why leave it there? But we do want to make sure that we don't landlocked anything and leave anything hurting for access for people and cars or for utilities. So that's why we just, y'all, I haven't seen the drawing, I think, I see y'all looking at one.
I'm going to give you my copies, but right now, it does not show street access or easement.
It's not an overhead, it's just.
Oh, okay. Elevations.
Yes.
And he owns the property on both sides.
And what would be the plan, Mr. Roberts, for the, for the street strip?
Actually, this, this is, this brought up the easement issue of Avenue K. So if I was to build these as per what this layout is, it's, it puts me encroaching in the easement of the road. Right here.
So how, how is the, the plan view, is this, oh, second floor. Okay, so here's the first floor.
This first floor, yep, that's correct.
And this would be toward the street, so this is oriented?
It could be oriented like this to the street. Or, you know, and that was another, that was a question I wanted to kind of pose to the council is, you, you guys are probably more aware of what the city's housing needs are than, than I am. What would the city like to see? I mean, to me, six one way and half a dozen the other. But would y'all like to, would y'all like to have something like, uh, like this there? It was just like an in, in, individual type of things? Or would, or, or, uh, or would there be a need for like additional apartments? Like a higher end apartment, but they wouldn't have, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have.
Townhomes?
These are townhomes.
Would these be opening up on former Avenue K or on Sixth Street?
On, 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 no, on Sixth Street.
They'd be opening on Sixth Street?
Yes.
So, well, this is a hundred and forty-five feet and so, okay, now I see what you're doing.
There you go.
So.
And depending on what.
How many lots would these take up?
Just one, just one. I mean, because, yeah, and, and, and if I did two of them and I, and I situated them this way on the property, so it would be like that.
Yeah.
But basically, the blue, what's highlighted in blue is what the, is what my first preliminary engineer said would be required of detention on that property. Is this. And what, 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 I mean, what sense does that make? I mean, it just, it's not, it's not feasible. It's just not. So.
If you put, cut them right here along Sixth Street and they stick out to there, well, we've killed the whole street. When all we're using is lots sixteen or fif, maybe fifteen and sixteen.
It's just, it's just that this is wider. It exceeds boundaries of what the meats and bounds are of a lot.
If you were going to do that, wouldn't it make more sense to put them down on this end and just kill this part of the street? You still have billable lots all the way up there.
Well, no, they wouldn't, they won't, they won't allow me to, I won't, I'm, I'm not allowed to do that because that's going to trigger, it's going to trigger, yes. Uh-huh, it's going to trigger that. Which, which, again, I went over this the last time with, I went over this with the drainage district that time, of the amount of impermeable surface, surface area on the lots. So currently, as these homes are, as the plot is now, the impermeable surface on these lots, I can only build on seven. I can't build on eight due to the pipeline. The total amount of surface area that covers the ground is twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet. That's not including driveways or sidewalks. That's just a slab area that fits on these seven lots. If I build just one of these, just one, the biggest one is, is almost half of that. It's seven thousand six hundred square feet of impermeable surface that covers this, just one. But I don't know what the engineer is going to say. He may still say, well, Randy, you got to go out here and dig another, you know, yeah, you know.
But it won't be the one point four hundred.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be huge, Randy, but I mean, it is still going to be a nuisance. And I would rather, I would rather avoid that and, um.
And are we talking detention ponds?
Yeah, detention ponds.
Or retention?
The same, they're one and the same.
Well, I'm saying to me the detention pond is smaller depth.
No, they're, 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 they're both the same. Detention and retention are, are, yeah, they're synonymous.
Based on the size. Would the county or the drainage district agree to a neighborhood detention pond where you, you kill one or two lots rather than knocking off one or two ones?
That's, that's a wonderful idea. And I would be glad to entertain that with them. But, you know, it's, the whole issue of the easement arose because that this, this right here would not fit on, on this. I would, I would encroach.
How many?
It was, it was six foot?
Six foot.
No, I think it was, I think it was six foot.
Well, I, I would have a hard time recommending that we kill this whole block of street because we need to encroach on it right up here at the entry to it. Um, you could take off one townhouse and then you wouldn't need this. Or you could move it to the back where you only kill a little bit of street. But to turn this where it sticks out right at the entry to the street and then kill the whole street, well, what about all these other lots? Now they're.
Right, well, there's nothing.
They're behind the eight ball.
Yeah, the, the, the lots, once I do this, these lots become, they, they, it has to be replanted. These lots are now no longer existence. They're going to, it's going to be like this. It's going to be a block of property like that. These lots will go away.
Well, but street rights of way are, are an asset that the public owns and they're worth money. And to just give up one, we wouldn't want to do unless we see, okay, what is going to happen? Why won't we need this in the future?
Well, it goes to the railroad track.
Yeah. And the basketball court's right here.
And it's already been given up on those.
And by the railroad commission, you've already got the, the crossing here. Railroad commission's not going to allow one there.
So realistically, it's, it's not going to be, go through over the tracks. So we all can agree on that. We can, we can agree on that. But it does provide access into here to all these other lots. And if there is a better way that allows all of these to be developed with better access, we should be flexible. But I recommend against just giving up a street unless we see, okay, what is the plan for all of it?
Yeah, but there's no, there's no more, there's no more lots, though. The, and once I do this and I replant it for a multifamily unit, the lots go away. They're, 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 they don't, they don't, they don't exist anymore.
The complaint that I've gotten so far with these is the idea that the only parking is pulling the front on Sixth Street. And that's, everybody that has come and complained, they've all asked, is he going to have an entryway where you can go behind, behind these things and also provide parking? And I didn't understand you say you were going to do that. It's just a.
Well, that, that's, that's another, that's another thing. If, if, if I need, if I need to like turn this and situated, again, that's going to be something that's going to be dictated to me by an engineer. I don't get to just go and do what I want to do. The, the engineer's going to have to, you know, they're going to have to tell me what I'm allowed to do on the property.
So they did, the engineers did say, when we turn them the other direction and pass those lot and lines, that's when we have to go in with the three point four miles underground detention.
No, it's, it's a little, it's like half, half a mile of.
They're saying you have to put in more detention if you turn it this way?
No, if I, if I did two units of these.
Oh, I got you.
Two, you know, so I would have sixteen total units.
Where we would maximize.
Yeah, to where I could use, utilize the property, but, but no. So like you can, I can, I can maybe put one of them in here.
I mean, well, they let you just say.
The house next door.
That's right here.
It goes all the way to the railroad.
All the way to the railroad tracks, yes.
Because we want to maximize it too, trust me.
Yeah, no, believe me. Would you rather have like sixteen or would you rather have thirty-two? Excuse me? I mean, you know, what, and, and what does, would the city prefer, you know, uh, like an apartment complex with parking all the way around it? Or would you prefer to have this where folks can go in and, you know, and if there needs to be like a little side, little parking area or something, you know, if I turn the thing sideways like that? I don't think anybody's going to want somebody driving back behind their home.
Is there a plan to develop the rest of this?
Uh, no, there won't be because of, because of, because of, because of, because of, because of this. I won't be able to do anything back there.
How many units for that again?
Sir?
How many units for that?
This, this is eight. There's, there's eight of them here. And it's under one roof.
And I'm not trying to be difficult, but it just, I don't understand the math that if, if we develop any of this, then we have to use part of it for detention and develop the rest. So I don't understand why that means develop none of it. I mean, I understand if, if you do more, then you'll, you'll lose some land to detention.
Right.
But you don't lose all of. But you don't lose all of it. So why would you not develop some of it and use the rest for detention?
Then if, if, if parking becomes an issue and, and that, and that becomes a concern, then what I, what I'll do is I'll have to turn this this way, okay? So you'll be looking at the, aesthetically, this thing looks better if it's facing the road, but otherwise, it's gonna face like this.
And you'll see the end.
And you're gonna see the end of this facing the road, that's, doesn't, doesn't look good.
If council looks at his plans and says, no, that's too much pulling Avenue N on because Sixth Street is a major street, that's a major thoroughfare, you know, it's a truck route. And council looks at his plans and says, whoa, we're not gonna have just pull in and out, pull in and out, pull in and out on Sixth, then that might make him turn them.
But if you rotated it that way, you still wouldn't have to put a pond.
I may not, yeah, that, you're right, Bill, that's, that's not gonna change a thing because the air, surface area is what.
Because then it would, you would have more access, you wouldn't be encroaching into what Avenue K is, the extension of Avenue K. And you could come in, and you could develop your, your street to come in and park it.
That's right.
I think that would be a better plan personally, and.
And then he wouldn't need these.
Well, he'd need it, well, he'd, he wouldn't have to have an easement, but the city's not wanting to, you know, not gonna spend the money to develop a street for you.
No.
And, you know, like.
He can develop it and donate it to us after.
Right, and we can maintain it, but that's, you know, but you could put a shell, you know.
A bait of.
Crush limestone, good, good entry. Personally, I, I'm like some of the people here, but everybody having to back out on Sixth Street could be because they fly on it sometimes. Personally, I think it'd be safer to, to rotate them like you've got them laid there.
It's a truck route.
It is a truck route.
Yeah, it's, it's, there's, there's, there's no problem whatsoever flipping this one this way, but as you said, to, to develop the rest of this back here, that's, this is what triggers this huge amount of what's nonsense to, to do, really, I mean, because, you know, in a, in a, in a, in a huge storm, this, this stuff back here has standing water on the ground anyway.
And that, that was, uh, Mr. Roberts, he needed council to kind of make a decision, like to say, no, we're not gonna let you turn them facing board Six.
Yeah, that, that, all that stuff helps me.
Right, we're gonna make you turn them. So I mean, that kind of helps him with his plan.
I think, I think it's safer for everybody.
Bill, if you wanna turn them, I'll turn them.
Well, it's not just me.
No, it's okay, it's okay. I'll turn them, I'll turn them.
That's, that's been the complaint.
Well, it's gonna be safer, and then, she's right, because everybody, that's her concern.
And then we would still maintain the right of way on Avenue K. You, we would, we'd probably enter an agreement where you could, uh, develop it, and that would leave us easements on it, and then we would still own the property. And I don't have, you know, I don't have a big issue with, you know, selling it or whatever, it's not.
Right now, right now, I, I, I'll probably, on this, I'll probably end up not utilizing all of what Avenue K is, okay? I just may use it just the very front to be able to access it, okay?
Those units.
Is Avenue K built?
No, it is not, there's, I don't wanna, there's, there's, there's live those trees that you and I can't reach around that are, that are, that are down this easement, and I don't, and.
That's my question, could we move to save a big oak tree like that? Could we shift over some footage?
No, you can't, you can't.
I'm saving trees.
You can't, you can't move any trees.
Every senior in Danbury has taken their picture in front of that tree, I'm not chopping it down. How, how, can we have like some shifting room to save?
Well, you, you should have, if you, if you rotated, you're gonna have room.
Yeah, I'll have room, I'll have plenty of room.
But there's a line of trees, where's the tree line for the runs down?
Well, if he rotates it, he may not even, he could maybe build the roadway on the property already up ahead.
That's right, that's right.
And that would save our trees?
Yes.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go in, I'm gonna clean out underneath this whole entire, I'm gonna clean the easement of Avenue K. I'm gonna, I'm going, I'm not gonna cut the trees down, I'm just gonna cut all the yopons and the briars and stuff like that, and I'm, I'm gonna clean it up.
Whether you, whether we need it to.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm gonna clean the city's easement.
He, he was at a standstill, and now that he's, if he's gonna get a clearer idea, everybody says.
This helps me, this helps me.
Yeah, I think rotating will work.
Okay.
And then, and then go to your engineer, and if, if you think you still need it, we can address a vanity.
No, I don't, I'm, I won't, I won't need it, I, I won't, I'll, I can tell you right now, I won't, I won't, I won't need it, yeah, it's just I wouldn't be able to, you know.
Right, which you weren't gonna be able to build anyway because you'd have to put a pond, a detention pond.
Right, so I, I've still gotta take this to the engineer, present this to him, show him this, and say, what can I do in order to get, you know, maybe he, he may say, okay, well, if you shorten these down to maybe six units apiece, and you can do two, and you can do a little bitty something back here for detention or whatever, you know, we, we may, we may entertain that. Or if he says, if you do this and this, you know, it, it's just that, you know, he, I, I may need something to access the back of this property to do like a detention on this back little spot right here, which is closer to the valley, but then I gotta, I gotta perform a, a drainage to be able to get the water to Sixth Street.
At least get you through your first part.
Yeah, he was at a standstill, right, he needed to.
I think rotating is the best option, everybody involved.
So we'll do it like that.
And then, you know.
Save your trees.
I'll save your trees, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna have the seniors save.
Make, make people happy.
Like I said, it, the, the people that came and complained with me, it was all about pulling in and out on Sixth Street, they, they, that was their concern.
No, that's not a, that's not a problem, that's, no, not for me.
Yeah, and figure out what, like I say, figure out what your engineer says you can do, and if, if he says that you really need that, we can address then what we want to.
But y'all, y'all prefer.
I prefer that to like an actual apartment. Because that's similar to what we already have.
This is, this is, this is, hey.
Sorry you had to wait so long for this tonight.
It's all right.
We just built sixteen houses.
Yeah, it's all right, now, it's, 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 it's okay, but that, that helps me.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying, that's what I told you, that, you, you could move forward with them or anybody, you got something to see.
I don't believe about the oak trees.
Yes, sir.
I think there's an oak tree you can't reach around.
I live right across the road there on corner of K and Six.
Uh-huh.
And, uh, who's gonna dig the ditch that's gonna drain all that off that you filling in over there? How y'all gonna get that water out of there?
The.
It rains, I'm saying.
Who's walking with the Drainage District?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Once, I, I'm, I'm, I'm responsible for whatever the water does on my property, once it hits, my property doesn't extend to the ditch.
That ain't, that's not a, I started, Danbury Drainage Ditch, y'all, that's a city ditch.
That's that Drainage District meeting that you were at, I believe, and we were at, we talked about the quarters of the city, so all those ditches are gonna get cleaned and there is a plan.
That ditch ain't that deep, they clean it out, but it ain't that deep, that place was flooded, other than when we got sixteen to learn, everything out there was flooded. Y'all talking about filling all that in with concrete, what's gonna dissipate, where's that water that's dissipating gonna go to get out of there?
That's where he's gotta come up with a retention pond.
Right, I mean, you gotta have a stormwater drain plan before you build anything.
On, 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 I'm not required to have one on quite an individual lot.
That's what his engineer's gonna help him come up with, and then he'll be able to come back.
Because what I could do, what I could do, is I could go ahead and say, you know what, I'm gonna pave Avenue K for you, I could do that. I could come in and say, I'm gonna take every one of them trees out, I'm gonna pave your road, and I'm gonna build houses just like I'm doing now, on both sides of the road, and the Drainage District, and say, damn.
Right.
Okay?
I said, I flooded over here a while back, and I see what that land does, ain't nobody in here to live over there.
I know the rules.
Right, I'm just trying to get something started.
Bad problem.
Because you were a student.
Giving up, giving up a, a road or whatever, you know, that you, uh.
Well, we're not giving up any.
We just fixed that problem too.
We just fixed that.
That water problem is what I'm, I'm.
Okay. We're gonna go on now.
Pretty much anything.
No, there's no action.
Hope it, hope it helps, Randy.
All right, let's go on now to number eleven, discussion and consideration of amending the channels ordinance pertaining to times waiting fees for various city youth organizations, religious and education groups, and other amendments, because Larry was looking into that, so that we can put some changes. Number eleven.
Okay.
Now, I'm assuming you've already redrafted that, Mr. Boyd, correct?
Um, it should be in your package, it's a very brief amendment.
Let's move on to heads.
It's number eleven.
Section twelve is, is the new part there.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, the name.
Don't just stick it together.
Uh, this ordinance shall not require a permit or fee for youthful vendors such as church youth groups, youth sports teams, youth scout groups, or youth school groups that are from the Danbury community. This ordinance requires a license but not a fee for charities exempt from federal income taxation. The remainder of ordinance number five and all other ordinances of the city shall remain in full force and effect.
And that, that's the part that, that changes, just that business value.
Okay.
So, youth groups don't need a license or a fee, charities need a license but not a fee, anybody else needs vote.
So, like earlier, we allowed this Danbury educational, so whatever, I can't remember the name, to use the park without a fee, and they would, under this, since they're a nonprofit, they wouldn't have to have a li, they'd have to get a license but not a fee.
Yes.
To use the park. Or, or like we did, we, we, uh, gave them variance, we approved it without a fee, which we can still do, you know, we can do it either way, we can still.
Yeah, if, if they're a 501(c)(3) or other 501(c) organization, then they, they don't, they do have to come get a license, but they don't owe a fee. And if there's some kind of good civic charitable organization, but they've never done the paperwork to get their federal tax exemption, then they can come in and get variance.
Because I don't believe that.
Come in and ask for a variance, I should say.
The one group we have, they're, correct, they're not, they come, but they're not a charitable organization, the, the red, white, and blue, they don't have a 503(c). So that would take care of them, right, the way it's worried now, Bill?
Right.
How, how does it take care of them?
They, they have to come get the license but not pay the fee.
They're not a 501(c), but they have to come get a variance.
So, if, yeah, you have to, if it's gonna be automatic, you, you need some kind of a standard, you can't just say, well, really good organizations don't have to pay a fee, that doesn't work, so where I'm suggesting we draw the line is whether they've got federal tax exemption.
Okay.
And they can show you, show us the certificate.
I don't think City Club.
And if they don't have that, then they're not automatically exempt from the fee, but they can always come in and request variance.
Which they already do anyway.
For, for other, well, they could just add that too. Well, I'll make a motion, what, what would be this number?
Nineteen fourteen.
Nineteen fourteen. I'll move that we approve ordinance number nineteen day fourteen and ordinance amending ordinance number five of City of Danbury concerning peddlers providing exemptions and providing savings clause, service clause, and effective date.
May I have a motion, Bill?
Second.
Seconded by Brenda Milligan, any other discussion?
I think this will help a lot.
All in favor? Okay, any opposed, and one absent?
All in favor, thanks, I appreciate it.
No, my son's working at the snow Wednesday, it's technically that which is not affect.
Okay.
We got eleven.
Let's go.
We still have it on ten.
Consider procedures and schedule for budget and tax rate, set hearings and authorized notices, and is that the one that Larry put together for us?
I have not, I need to finish that, oh, you've done one?
Well, I, I put these items in from, uh.
For Robin?
Yes.
Robin has a really good outline on that, and usually I do one, and I assume you want me to, that it has more detail, and it's not just a calendar, but also a procedural step-by-step guide, and I need to get that wrapped up in due, as a short answer.
Because we're kind of working a little ahead of what we worked last year, getting the budget and stuff done, so we'll be maybe a little bit ahead of time, you know, next year, it's gonna have to be, like, budget time's gonna have to come in like March.
Yeah, the whole thing that will shift next year because.
Because of that election.
It all evolves around the November election day, automatic recall elections if you go over the rollback rate, or the new voter approval rate, they call it, and everything goes backward planning from the November election day, we'll allow that to happen.
You could probably have that viral, we're having a meeting August first, you could have that.
Oh, easy, excellent.
I'll say this one, no action, let Larry handle it for August first.
Okay. All right, then, I think there's all the ones at top, yes, we have that, okay. Now, we're gonna go into executive session, under Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven four, to deliberate concerning appointment of a committee to assist with selection of a police chief. Number two, executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven four, to deliberate concerning employment of police chief, and executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven one and five five one oh seven four, to consult with attorney and to deliberate concerning training, performance evaluation, and duties of police officers. And we're gonna go into executive session at nine sixteen. We're gonna go back into general business at ten oh two, those in attendance, Kobe Pruitt, Bill Trontecy, Heather Martin, Brenda Milligan, and we're gonna go down to item number eighteen, I mean, excuse me, item number twenty, discussion and consideration of police department training.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve, allowing Officer Humbird to attend crisis intervention training, is that what it was, Mr.?
Yes.
And the city pay whatever time he would have been scheduled to work next year while he's gone.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? All right, I have a second, all in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay, so it's two and two, so, Mr. Boyd, I get a chance to vote, vote correct?
Yes.
And the mayor votes, uh, yes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys, I really appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna go back into executive session at ten oh four, and do I need to read the other two that we're gonna go back in for, Mr. Boyd?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we're gonna go back into executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven four, to deliberate concerning appointment of a committee to assist with selection of a police chief, and number two, executive session under Texas Government Code, section five five one oh seven four, to deliberate concerning employment of police chief.
If I'm no longer needed tonight, I've asked Officer Humbird to stay until you all have completed the night, so if you don't think you're gonna need me anymore tonight, then I'm gonna leave, but if you do, I'll just work in my office until you're ready.
And, and, uh, we don't have to have Officer Humbird to stay, we, we do all the time, we're positive, and we love him.
We do. Okay, I'm not, I'm not used to that. Do you promise to be with the mayor?
No, we're sure, no, we're used to locking ourselves.
He's got his arm off.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna go back into general business at eleven oh eight, those still in attendance, Kobe Pruitt, Bill Trontecy, Heather Martin, Brenda Milligan, absent, Those still in attendance, Kobe Pruitt, Bill Tontse, Heather Martin, Brenda Milligan, absent, Sue Powell.
I'm absent.
Absent, Sue Powell.
Maybe she said Brenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, Brenda Milligan's here the whole time, absent, Sue Powell, late night. Okay, we're gonna go to number eighteen, uh, discussion and consideration of forming a committee to help with the interviewing process and recommendations for City of Danbury Police Chief. Okay?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, allow Mayor Strong to, uh, contact some people to be a committee for interviewing, uh, our police chief applicants. Good enough, Larry?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Discussion and consideration of setting dates for beginning interviews for the City of Danbury Police Chief. When do y'all want to interview somebody? Right, so I need to tell them the candidate, maybe the, by the August meeting, maybe?
Wouldn't that be good?
Be, that be.
Yeah, it'd be a while, I, you know, I don't have a chance to look over all the.
Right, but, and then we gotta give them time to come.
And give a committee to look, yeah.
So the next time you'd want me to bring it before y'all again would be the August, uh.
The regular August meeting?
Mm-hmm.
That's a month, yeah, that'd always give us time to.
Look at it.
Today's the eighteenth, and it'd be the fifteenth of August.
Yes, sir.
Yes, that's.
Is that fine with y'all?
And we, and, and, yeah, and if we decide to do it soon, we're gonna have another, some more meetings between then and then, we could change it. But August fifteenth ought to be happening.
Okay, because by the time we get that meeting and they review.
Give them nearly a month.
Mm-hmm, and then get some kind of report back? Okay, because it could be if they give a report back, then I could maybe even schedule somebody to come interview that night. If there was somebody that they all agreed on, okay? So, a motion made for the August fifteenth, somebody second? Okay, Heather did, are all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, and I just need to say now, we are adjourned at.
I think we got to check virus.
At eleven eleven.